Welcome to Town Hall, and thank you for attending a Gilbert Public Meeting. Here are a few things to know. The meeting will be held in the council chambers. Should additional seating be needed, you may watch from our lobby. If you would like to speak at today's meeting, you'll find both agendas and speaker cards at the front counter in the lobby. Our staff is here to assist you fill out the cards and find the corresponding agenda items. All speaker cards from the public must be submitted prior to the start of the meeting. The Town Council is committed to providing an environment where everyone's voice is heard during public meetings. In an effort to preserve order and decorum, here are a few rules and guidelines we ask everyone to follow during the meeting. You may bring signs and similar items into the council chambers, but these items may not be held above shoulder height or otherwise obstruct the view or block the path of members of the audience. Disruptions impact the flow of discussion, potentially intimidate others, and detract from the purposes of the meeting. Therefore, disruptive behavior, including, but not limited to, cheering, shouting, booing, or the use of profanity, is prohibited. Applause is only permissible during the presentations and proclamations portion of the agenda. Threats directed toward any individual or group are prohibited. Speakers may not campaign or advocate for or against candidates for office, or ballot issues, or otherwise attempt to influence the outcomes of elections. A full list of meeting rules is displayed at the entrance of the council chambers. During the public hearing portion of the agenda and during communications from citizens, when your name is called, please come forward to the podium, then state your name, your town of residence, and begin speaking. Remarks shall be limited to three minutes. Citizens who are at the meeting and wish to donate their time to a single speaker must fill out an individual card and then combine their speaker cards. In such an event, one person from the group shall be designated to present their remarks, which shall be limited to six minutes. If one speaker is speaking on behalf of others who are present, the mayor or vice mayor shall read into the record the names of those whose time is combined. No person other than the individual speaking shall enter into the discussion. Officials on the dais may not respond to any questions or comments during communications from citizens. However, the council may ask questions during public hearing items. All comments and questions shall be directed through the mayor or presiding officer. Thank you again for attending a Gilbert Town Meeting and for your participation in local government.
It got very quiet, so it must be time to start. Good evening and welcome to the Gilbert Town Council Meeting for December 17th, 2024. I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. The first thing on our agenda this evening is to remind everyone to please turn off and silence your cell phones and devices. Council members? I look left to right, council members. And next, we will have our invocation by Senior Pastor Kristen Hansen of First United Methodist Church. Welcome this evening, Pastor. Thank you for being here.
Hello, Mayor, and the members of the council who are here from our community, and for all of those of you who are attending today also. This week in Christian tradition, we celebrate a little during the seriousness of Advent, and we have some joy that comes up as shepherds are in the field and angels come to them. And so I thought I'd begin our prayer today with singing a little bit of "Away in the Manger," and if you want to join with me, you're welcome to do that. And so let us begin our prayer. Away in a manger, no crib for a bed. The little Lord Jesus laid down His sweet head. The stars in the sky looked down where He lay. The little Lord Jesus asleep on the hay. We gather here together today as representatives from our diverse community, seeking your guidance and wisdom, Creator. May our discussions today be filled with respect and understanding, recognizing the unique perspectives each of us brings. Help us to work together in harmony, setting aside our differences to serve the common good for Gilbert. Grant us the clarity to make decisions that benefit all members of our community and courage to act with integrity and compassion. May our efforts reflect the values of justice, peace, and unity. We ask for your blessing, God, on this meeting and on our community. May we always strive to create a better world for everyone. In Jesus Christ, we pray, amen. And I thank you from First United Methodist Church of Gilbert. I'm Reverend Dr. Kristen Hansen.
Thank you so much, Pastor Hansen. We appreciate everything that First United Methodist does in our community. I can name members of your congregation. I appreciate that fact. Next, we will move to the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Torgerson will be leading us.
... allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which your hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Now, if I could please have our Town Clerk Herrera conduct the roll call.
Mayor Bridget Peterson.
Present.
Vice Mayor Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Chuck Bon Giovanni.
Here.
Councilmember Young Kaprowski.
Here.
Councilmember Kathy Tilke.
Here.
And Councilmember Jim Torgerson. A quorum is present.
Thank you so much, Chevelli. The first item on our agenda this evening is to present the vice mayor with a little gift. Vice Mayor, if you could join me down on the floor. Each year, the Gilbert Town Council chooses one member of the council to serve as the vice mayor from January till the end of the year. This year, chosen was Scott Anderson. As mayor of the town of Gilbert, it's my distinct pleasure to express sincere appreciation to Scott Anderson for serving as vice mayor for the town of Gilbert in 2024. Scott Anderson carried out the duties of the office of vice mayor, honoring the public trust and representing the citizens of Gilbert with integrity and leadership. Congratulations, and I have a little traditional gift that we've been giving to all the vice mayors. Sorry, I wasn't trying to walk away too fast. Congratulations, thank you. Next is presenting Councilmember Tilke. Tonight is Councilmember Tilke's last evening as a Gilbert council member, and I would like to have her join me down here on the floor. Thank you. We're just going to stay down here for a couple of items. Councilmember Tilke. Resolution number 4521, a resolution of the Common Council of the Town of Gilbert, Arizona, honoring Councilmember Kathy Tilke for her service to the residents of Gilbert during her term of office. Whereas while Kathy Tilke was duly elected as a council member in Gilbert's 2020 primary election by Gilbert's residents for a term to begin in January 2021, due to a vacancy on the Gilbert Town Council, she was appointed to begin serving her term in August of 2020. Whereas Kathy Tilke was nominated and appointed by council and served as vice mayor in 2023. And whereas Kathy Tilke served as council liaison to numerous boards and commissions at the local county and state level, providing a crucial link between citizen advisory boards and the council. And whereas Kathy Tilke advocated for consistent and fair engagement with the community. And whereas she has exercised careful consideration when evaluating policies and budget items prior to council reaching a decision. And whereas she has carried out the duties of public office, honoring the public trust and representing the residents of Gilbert with integrity and courageous leadership. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Town Council, on behalf of the citizens of the town of Gilbert, hereby express sincere appreciation to Kathy Tilke for her service to the town as a member of the Gilbert Town Council, passed and adopted by the Common Council of the Town of Gilbert, Arizona, this 17th day of December, 2024. Just like the Student Awards, I thought you would want to come and take a photo.
I think they said I could say a few words. And so it's really emotional, so I hope you don't mind. I'm going to read it, so it won't be quite so emotional for me to get through it tonight. Thank you for this nice recognition, Mayor. I really appreciate it. I've truly loved my time on the council, as we have accomplished so many wonderful things that will ensure our community will maintain our quality of life long into the future. But you don't accomplish these things alone. I want to thank the councils I've had the pleasure to work with for their commitment to this goal and for making hard decisions when they need to be made. I want to acknowledge the 1,600-plus town employees who dedicate their hearts and souls every day to keep Gilbert best in class. Sorry, I thought I'd do it with no emotion if I read it. I've made so many lifelong friends during my time at the chamber and on council who I will treasure forever. But mostly, I want to thank my family, especially my husband Greg, from the bottom of my heart for their support of me as I serve this community. Leaving the council is so much harder than I thought it would be. But I'm not saying goodbye. I'm just opening a new page, which I'll announce in January, and I hope that you all will join me in this effort. So with that, thank you very much, and we'll go to the next item, Mayor, if that's okay. Come on up, Mayor. This is Mayor Peterson's last meeting as well. We both started our term. Well, I came on just a little bit before you because of being appointed early, but so we spent the last four and a half years together and beyond. A resolution of the Common Council of the Town of Gilbert, Arizona, honoring Mayor Bridget Peterson for her service for the residents of Gilbert during her term of office. Whereas Bridget Peterson was elected to the position of mayor of the Town of Gilbert in November 2020 and has served as mayor since January 2021. And whereas she has dedicated her term to connecting with the community and serving the needs of the organization with dialogue, discretion, and decision-making that acknowledges the cares and concerns of Gilbert stakeholders. And whereas Bridget Peterson served as a liaison on numerous boards and commissions at the local county and state level to protect and honor the link between our community, the region, and the council. Whereas Bridget Peterson consistently advocated for Veterans Affairs, public safety, thoughtful planning practices, and sound budgeting policies to ensure Gilbert remains a community of excellence. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Town of Gilbert, on behalf of the residents of the Town of Gilbert, hereby express a sincere appreciation to Bridget for her service to the town as mayor, passed and adopted by the Common Council of the Town of Gilbert, Arizona, this 17th day of December, 2024. Everybody who knows me is not surprised that I have it typed out. A little something that I wanted to say in addition. So, Mayor, I want to thank you for all your years of community service. You have loved this community and worked tirelessly through your volunteer efforts as a planning commissioner, council member, and mayor. As this chapter ends, we wish you all the best and hope that you'll always know that you have made a significant difference in our community. And did you want to say a few words?
I'm going to save mine for up there.
Okay. Alrighty, then I'm going to get a photo taken.
Before I just share a few thoughts as serving as mayor and council member, because these are resolutions, we actually need to take a formal vote. So I would like to ask that someone make a motion to accept both of these resolutions. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Anderson, seconded by Councilmember Bon Giovanni. Please vote. Motion passes 6-0. Those resolutions are now official. I asked Councilmember Tilke to actually read my resolution this evening because, well, a couple of reasons. One, she's leaving and I'm leaving, so I thought it would be more fun if I read hers and she read mine. And Kathy Tilke was actually one of the very first people that I ever met in the town of Gilbert back in 1997. So we've known each other for a very long time and been through quite a lot of stuff together over the years. So I wrote a few words down, and I probably will get emotional like you too, Kathy. Mine's a little bit longer. So when I moved to Gilbert in the fall of 1995, my daughter was in half-day kindergarten for about three hours a day, and I started volunteering at her school in the classroom and in the library, and that was Islands Elementary School. The next summer, we moved into our home, the same home we live in today, and I started volunteering at her new school in the classroom and library, which really coincidentally was with the same librarian that had been at Islands Elementary School. She moved over to Sonoma Ridge Elementary School. I continued to volunteer at my daughter's school till she graduated into junior high school, so through sixth grade. And then I was also, at the same time, volunteering in my new neighborhood and attended the First Congress of Neighborhoods in the spring of 1997, where I randomly sat at a table with Kathy Tilke. I then started volunteering with the Congress of Neighborhoods, attended the Southeast Valley Leadership Classes, Gilbert's community with, I was a member of Gilbert's community with Character Task Force, and then participated in the Gilbert Chamber of Commerce Gilbert Leadership Program that Kathy Tilke started. I was in Class 8. After graduating from Gilbert Leadership, I applied to be on the Town of Gilbert Planning Commission, where I served for 14 years and two months during some of the most active planning years in the town of Gilbert. The commission was scheduled to meet once a month, and most often from 2001 to 2005, met twice a month. And I asked about my attendance when I ran for office in 2014, and it was somewhere around 194 scheduled meetings in that 14 years and two months, and I attended 186 of them. So missing only about eight meetings out of that whole entire time. For the Planning Commission, I was interviewed and appointed under three different mayors, served as chair for three years, and vice chair for two years. Excuse me, vice chair for three years and chair for two years. I also served on the 2000 Bond Advisory Committee on three general plan subcommittees as the zoning hearing officer liaison to the Economic Development Advisory Board, where I served with Kathy Tilke. That board doesn't exist anymore. And too many other subcommittees to mention over the years, and many election and reelection campaigns throughout the years in Gilbert. In 2012, on a whim, I decided to apply for the Gilbert Leadership Board. And I ended up serving there for seven years, including a year as board chair. During that time, I heard a council member speak, and he said he would shut down Freestone Rec Center because it was only 80% sustainable. That was the moment that I decided that I was going to run for Town Council, after having been asked for years if I would run and having decided that I would never run for office in Gilbert. I finally jumped into that race because I thought if I wasn't willing to step up and make a difference, I couldn't expect someone else to do it. So I ran for council in 2014. I was one of seven running for four seats, including three incumbents. And I was elected and finished third behind two incumbents and beating the person that wanted to shut down Freestone Rec Center. I did still serve with him for four years, though, and we still get along well today. In 2018, I ran for reelection to council. I was one of seven running again for the four seats, and there were three incumbents, including myself that time. I was reelected, finishing first, and I'm going to throw this out there for the record. I'm the only person to ever beat Eddie Cook on a ballot. I came in first, and Eddie came in second. In 2020, when the mayor decided not to run for reelection, I jumped into the race. And since I was off, on the off cycle, I had to resign from council on March 31st, 2020. That was just about as the pandemic was hitting, and everything and everyone changed. That's when the real fun started. I was called a racist and a cat killer in 2020. Just a couple of things the Republican Party made up and shared about me, a Republican woman in the community. But they had a Republican man running against me, so I think most of it was because I was a woman running against their person. But I won that election on the day that the Trump-Biden election happened, the general election in 2020, by over 17,000 votes. I had 70,000 votes, and my opponent had 53,000 votes. As a council member, over those years, over five years, I participated in over 120 ribbon cuttings. I traveled to China and Northern Ireland for sister city visits. I traveled to the National League of Cities in DC and Nashville. I also traveled to Washington DC on a special trip representing a tribal entity, and had the honor of meeting with a member of Congress in the United States Capitol. I clearly remember sitting in a waiting room, looking at pictures of past presidents, one of Abraham Lincoln sticks in my mind, and I thought, how did this little girl from Marlborough, Massachusetts get here? How am I sitting in the Capitol of the United States? During the trip, I also met with many members of Congress in their offices. And since after that, I served as liaison to the Planning Commission, Gilbert Sister Cities, and several other assignments as a council member. As mayor since April of 2021 to today, I have participated in 170 ribbon cuttings, including my most proud moment at the Gilbert Public Safety Training Facility, one here at Gilbert Town Hall, following the remodel, and last night at the Gilbert Water Tower Plaza. As mayor, I've also traveled to Northern Ireland and part of a Greater Phoenix Economic Council to Washington DC. Over the past four years, since January of 2021, I've served on the Phoenix-Mason Gateway Airport Authority Board, serving as chair, and I'm currently the treasurer until today. It was my last meeting. I've served League of Arizona Cities Executive Committee, Nominating Committee, Resolutions Committee, Public Safety Military Affairs, and Courts. I've served Maricopa Association of Government Executive Committee, Regional Council, Transportation Policy Committee, Valley Metro Regional Public Transit Authority, and the Audit and Finance Subcommittee for that group, Canada-Arizona Business Council, plus two topic-specific subcommittees, Judicial Selection Advisory Board Liaison, Gilbert Chamber of Commerce Liaison, Veterans Advisory Board Liaison, USS Arizona Subcommittee, Mayor's Advancing Education in Gilbert, For Our Town Gilbert and Gilbert Feeding Families Liaison, and Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee Chair. I thought it was important to share my history in this community, the historical perspective I have and how I've served this community for more than two decades, mostly unpaid as a volunteer. For the love of Gilbert and to see consistency in good planning continue, as a planning commissioner, council member, and mayor, there were votes I was on the winning side of, and there were votes I was on the losing side of. I always did what I was believed was best for the residents of Gilbert. I never made campaign promises. I have always been straightforward with everyone, and I will leave office in January, knowing I worked very hard and served this community with honor. I'd like to thank, first, the council staff, because they work harder than anybody in this community. They have a lot to take care of and a lot of on their plate, most especially my aide, Kirsten Morgan. Kirsten, where are your hand? And then, I hate to point out any specific departments, but our clerk's office, there's so few of them, and they handle a load for this community that really is, they're really the unsung heroes in this community. They do so much that happens behind the scenes. You hear and see about the departments that are big and more active in the community all the time, Gilbert Public Safety, Gilbert Police, Gilbert Fire, our Parks and Recs Departments, but there are departments that get a lot of work done behind the scenes. Our attorney's office, led by Chris Payne over there, our town manager's office, led by Orville Redenbacher over there. I couldn't resist. Now you can't unsee it, right? That's all you're going to be able to see. But first and foremost, I want to thank every member of public safety. I have felt so much love from police and fire over the years, and I appreciate that so much. I have felt like one of your team members, always, first and foremost. So thank you for that. I appreciate it. And I know Chief Solberg isn't here, but I'll talk to him later. For all of the other employees, you do so much for this community that we could never give enough thanks for. There's just no way. I appreciate you all and the support that I've had. But most importantly, before I even thank my family, the residents. I have had so many people reach out for the past two months, and even just last night at the water tower ribbon cutting, I had residents coming up just to shake my hand and thank me for my service to this community. And that means more than anything that anybody can do. And I know we've had our handful, I can say whatever I want tonight, crazies that have been attacking me for the past four years. But something that you all need to know is that female mayors get attacked at a very high rate all over this country, which is unacceptable in 2024. And as people and residents, we all need to do better. We have seen and heard from our teens that they're having issues in this community, but they're learning from all of you. And if you don't step up to be better people, they're never going to learn to do that. So I send that out to you as, please, 2025, let's turn a new leaf and be better people in this community. Go back to who you were pre-pandemic and show a better side of all of yourselves to the children living in this community, because they're the most important. And then to my family, who has put up with a lot over the past four years. I couldn't do this without them. My husband's had his job threatened by people. And that's just not acceptable. Gilbert, you need to do better. So I'm asking you to do so tonight on my last night here as mayor. Thank you. Okay, now I have to go into my part of the agenda. Who reorganized this? Public hearing items. Public hearing items are all heard at one public hearing time. Anyone wishing to comment may submit a slip before the meeting starts, and I have several here in front of me. Yes, I wish to speak. No, I do not wish to speak. We have, I will open the public hearing. We have five liquor licenses on the agenda. Would someone like? Would someone like, I will close the public hearing if someone liked to make an agenda, motion to pass those items.
Mayor.
I made a motion to pass items four, five, six, seven, and eight as written.
A second.
Thank you. We will, please vote. I almost said we had to do a voice vote, but we don't tonight. Motion passes six-zero. So moving on to item number nine on our agenda, which is property acquisition, number 10, property acquisition. Does anyone have any comments about those? I'll open the public hearing. Would someone like to make a motion for items nine and 10? I'll close the public hearing.
I'd just like a quick explanation, because I'd like people to see where.
Okay, okay. That's what I was looking for. Opening the public hearing, could we have a comment on items nine and 10 from someone on staff, please? Is anybody prepared?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Item number nine is property acquisition for negotiated settlement for the completion of what we like to call Little Lindsay Road, the widening of Lindsay, the last little portion in the town that's not widened to our minor arterial standard. So this is just a negotiated price for the land acquisition for this particular parcel. And then item number 10, property acquisition, is for the acquisition of a site for one of our wells as part of our well resiliency program in Gabriella Point that was previously discussed with council. And this is the formal purchase agreement now that we have drilled the well and found a good quantity of water that can be produced from that site.
Thanks, Jessica. Councilmember Torgerson, did that answer your questions?
Yes, I just wanted people to be able to see what their water is buying for them in the future, and that is more wells for the future.
So I will close the public hearing, bring it back to the dais if someone would like to make a motion on those two items.
I move to accept items nine and 10 as written.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Torgerson, seconded by Councilmember Kaprowski. Please vote. Motion passes six-zero. I will move, moving to the next items on our agenda, open the public hearing. Chris Payne, could you just give a short explanation to these codes that we're going to be discussing next?
Yes, Mayor and council, these items, starting on 11 through 19, were all, are all proposed code amendments that were discussed with council at a study session held, I believe it was February of 2023. At the time, there was a lot of discussion with the council. Some direction was given to make some changes, some modifications. Those changes were made, and this is what's before council at this time.
Thank you. And we have Assistant Chief Mike Engstead here to talk about each one in a little revised version, correct, Chief?
Hi, Mayor and council, yes, that's correct. And if it's okay, I'll jump around just a tiny bit. I'll start here with number 11, which talks to our ordinance with regard to sidewalk streets and other public places. This is specifically speaking toward obstruction of public property as it relates to bus shelters and transportation facilities. So it would make it unlawful to remain at a bus stop essentially for over an hour. The thought being that we want the space to be open to the public and for other people to use. We don't want anybody to set up camp at a bus stop, and it provides a mechanism for officers to contact people if they are seen, you know, if they're a bus stop all day. I'll keep going. If it's okay with council, I'll jump to number 14. Item number 14 speaks to unnecessary vehicle noise. And we did discuss this ordinance back in 2023. This one's a little bit lengthy, and if you'll bear with me, I'll kind of go over the important parts of this one. The other ones are relatively quick. This one's lengthy. Currently, if you are to operate a vehicle at such a speed on a curve or a turn so as to create a loud and unnecessary noise through the squealing of tires upon a roadway or accelerating or decelerating such vehicle in such a manner as to create loud or unnecessary noise through the squealing of tires upon the roadway or to cause damage to the roadway, which is a wordy, a wordy way of saying you can't squeal your tires on the road. That's currently our ordinance. This amendment seeks to expand that to prohibiting squealing tires to also apply to streets, highways, sidewalks, parking garages, parking lots that we deal with, or any other asphalt, concrete, or pavement in addition to roadways or to cause damage to said locations or surfaces. As the council knows, we spend a lot of time in our parking garages and our surface lots. Currently, if somebody is to, you know, lay rubber on Vaughn Street, for example, it's a violation of state law. It's a violation of our ordinance. When they pull into the parking garage and do the same thing, it's currently not. And this is an attempt to include those spaces. This amendment also seeks to prohibit using horn signals or noise devices on specified vehicle types as, except as authorized by town code or ordinance. So using your horn, if you were to lay on your horn and for a half an hour, it would be unreasonable. That's a violation of state law on a roadway. This expands that to if you parked in our parking garage and you just laid on your horn for a half an hour, that would also be now an ordinance violation. This amendment also seeks to prohibit exhaust systems that create disturbing or unreasonably loud noise. So if you are operating a vehicle that has a muffler, the way that was manufactured, you're never going to be in violation of this ordinance. What this is speaking to is if you were to cut the muffler off and try to run straight pipes, if you've ever been around a car, a hot rod that, somebody does that, it is unreasonably loud. It hurts your ears and you can't help but cover them. This amendment also seeks to prohibit revving of engines while such vehicle's not in motion, except when done in the course of repairing, adjusting, or testing your vehicle. So if you're working on your car, no problem. But again, if you were to pull into the parking garage and just rev your engine for a half an hour while people are trying to dine right next door, that would be a violation of the ordinance. And then there's some exemptions for government. So if an officer was chasing somebody who just robbed a bank and they squealed their tires while they're turning, it would be exempt from this ordinance.
We have a question, Chief.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Chief, so as far as the exhaust goes, it has to be manipulated and modified by the owner. If I bought an exhaust system from any store, there'd be no issue with that, correct?
Correct. As long as you didn't go out of your way to buy something that's completely unreasonable. But I can't speak to every hypothetical, but if it's, if it has a muffler and it's designed to muffle noise, you're probably going to be fine. I can say for context that this is the same ordinance that the Chandler, the City of Chandler has. It's mirrored exactly. I don't think they've had an experience where somebody has, in good faith, modified their car and ever been cited. This is really that, the reason why we put the word unreasonable in there is it has to be just so, so far outside the norm that we really have no other choice.
Okay, because I know like in motorcycles, Harley-Davidsons are loud on purpose so they can be heard and not hit. So I want to just make sure that if someone can buy something in a store, even if it's a high-performance store, that it's legal as long as they're not making modifications to it, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Did you have Councilmember Torgerson?
Yeah, I mean, my problem is the term reasonable, it's subjective. But I remember I had a vehicle, and I actually put something that I thought was too loud, and this goes back to like 1990 or something, because it was loud, and it was loud inside of the car. But it was legal. It was bought at, it was bought at whatever the speed shop was that I lived near. And I took it out because it was hard for me. But that's something that's legal. And so we're leaving a subjective term to something that somebody can just buy. I bought it. I mean, I just happened to be annoyed by it myself, let alone my neighbors. But I don't see, and the half-hour thing, let that go. That could be 30 seconds. How are we defining reasonable?
Councilmember Torgerson, that's a great question, and it comes up a lot in court. We have other state statutes that also use a reasonable standard, disorderly conduct being one of them. And it really becomes an issue for the courts to decide. Our officers, as they go through the court process quite often, they're pretty good at being able to define what would, what a judge would find reasonable or what a reasonable person would conclude. But it is a typical legal standard, and there's some subjectivity to it. Unfortunately, there isn't always a better mechanism, though, to bring it to the court's attention and have the argument heard.
But our regular noise ordinance couldn't cover that?
I'll defer to our attorney here.
Oh, Zach Altman in a suit is here to present to us this evening. I'm so surprised. I have to give him a hard time. It's my last meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and council. The question about the noise ordinance, my recollection is that it requires decibel readings from two different time periods, I believe 15 minutes apart, which isn't really practical for vehicle applications, right? That would mean that we would have to basically detain the person, have them continue making the noise for that time period, bring in a decibel meter, so on and so forth. So that's why it's written, as Assistant Chief indicated, with a reasonableness standard, which mirrors state statute.
I do know that we need to go over our noise ordinance because it's not right either, correct? Compared to other municipalities in Arizona, isn't ours rather unique?
I'm not sure, Councilmember. I haven't done research. I'm not sure if it's appropriate or not.
Yeah, I'm very sure, actually. But all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Zach. I'm going to use an example. So my husband has a diesel truck, and he was backed into our RV gate one night, and the neighbor came out and said, hey, man, something's wrong with your truck. You need a new muffler. And my husband said, no, dude, it's a diesel. It's supposed to, it's supposed to sound like that, right? You used a Harley-Davidson as example. It's, it came off the lot like that, and it makes that noise because it's a diesel truck. So I think the point is that the police officers, in most cases, know what is supposed to be there and what isn't supposed to be there. They know what's modified and what isn't modified, because they do it all the time, I think. Helpful. And because they deal with the judges, so they know what the judges will look at.
Yes.
But keep notes if there's something that you want to vote differently on, just, we're on 14 on that one. Just keeping track.
Mayor, are you okay if I move on to item number 15?
Ian, yep.
Okay.
Got to keep track of what you're doing, though, Chief. So we did 11, and now we're doing 14.
Yes.
We do 14.
11, 14, and then I'll be doing 14 through 19, so sorry about that. Item number 15 speaks to some no parking areas. This particular section seeks to add a requirement that drivers not park over, on, or covering any markings of any parking spaces stalls or parking areas unless the vehicle size prohibits it from parking within a single space stall or parking area. So basically, what we're saying is, as you drive around town, I'll use our parking garage as an example again. There's nothing that says you actually have to park in a parking space currently. You can actually park wherever you want. From time to time, we'll encounter people who, instead of parking in a space, will take up a bunch of spaces for whatever reason. Most of the time, they're hanging out up on the upper deck. But you will see, as you drive around town, there are people that are inconsiderate. It also becomes an issue downtown when we have angled parking in front of some of the businesses, and we'll have somebody just decide, I don't want to park at an angle. I'm just going to park straight, or I'm going to park across a bunch of parking spaces. We don't currently have a mechanism to engage them other than to just be polite and, hey, you know, can you look out for other people? We want everybody to have access to places like Joe's Barbecue. But this particular no parking area amendment speaks to that issue. And moving on to number 16, unless there's any questions on that one. Number 16 speaks to a related issue. Currently, angled parking is allowed per our ordinance, or we're allowed to establish areas of angled parking, and we have some downtown. Our current ordinance requires that we post a sign to mark the area where there's angled parking. And this is asking to remove that requirement for the sign and that the markings on the pavement themselves serve as the indicator for people to understand that they have to angled park. I think most people get it without a sign. You can clearly see the spots are angled. Having no questions on that. Moving to item 17. So this amendment seeks to apply the same or similar lighting requirements required by state law for bicycles to all bicycles, electric bicycles, motorized bicycles, and mopeds operated within the town, regardless of whether or not they're ridden on or across roadways. So specifically, if you're riding a bicycle, let's say you're riding down Baseline Road at night, and it's dark, you're required to have a light on the front of your bike and a reflector on the back. Most people have little red lights on the back so that vehicles can see them, because it's super dangerous. It's dark in certain areas, especially along, you know, between Wrecker and Baseline, for example. And we want people to be able to see pedal cyclists. The problem is when they ride into the Target parking lot or another dark parking lot, especially around the holidays right now, we don't have any requirement that you have any lighting on a bicycle, and the concern is that you're going to get hit in the dark. And so this amendment is asking for the ordinance to reflect the same requirements that state law requires on a roadway we would require anytime you're on a bicycle at night. Any questions on that?
Madam Banjivani?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Say we pass these ordinances tonight, what's the plan to alert and let the residents know of them?
So it's our plan to educate the public via our website, similar to what we do with regard to motorized scooters and other devices that people use in neighborhoods. We try to do an education campaign before we do any enforcement. And then we'll go to making stops but having conversations before we issue citations.
Thanks, Chief. Any other comments?
Thanks, Chief.
Mayor. Bye. Councilmember Kaprowski.
For the, when you engage and educate on these bike lights, does the police department have kits to be able to provide the lights to individuals that don't have them?
I don't believe we do currently. I know we hand out helmets and other items, but I, I'm not aware of us ever issuing lights, any kind of lighting.
Is that something we can look into and begin with this ordinance?
Yes, Councilmember, yes, absolutely.
Thanks, Chief. You can move on.
All right, moving on to number 18. This particular code seeks to exempt from false alarm assessments those alarm systems operated by the town of Gilbert, the county, the state, or the federal government, and installed on premises such entity occupies or uses for governmental purposes. So currently, as an example, we have an alarm on our property and evidence building. And it'll go off from time to time because rabbits will get out into the open part of the facility where we can't have people running around in because there's evidence outside. It'll set off the alarm, and we'll dispatch an officer to go investigate the alarm and see if somebody broke into our property building. We'll look on the camera, and sure enough, it's wildlife that set it off. But if we have more than three of those per our town code, we actually have to fine ourselves. We have to send an assessment to somebody within the town, send something to the police department. They generate a payment and pay a fine back to the town. And this ask is, it's kind of just a check with the council whether or not, we've been doing this since I started in 1998, and the question is, should we continue to do this up to the council?
Councilmember Telke.
Thank you, Mayor. I did give Mike a heads up, so he's not surprised. But we had a long conversation during our study session on this. And again, this is one of those times that I still put my chamber hat back on. And so let me just give you my philosophy and my reasoning for this. So I always believe that if we pass a law to regulate and fine businesses, we should hold ourselves accountable to the same standard. While I understand it seems redundant to process fines within internal departments, I understand that. But the bigger issue is, why do we have this law in place to begin with? Why do we penalize those who have more than three false alarms within one year? Is it because we're taking patrol away from their routes to address these issues? And so we need to change behavior of those that have alarms? I know that the police department's not the only one that has rabbits running around and setting off alarms, so I want to be clear about that. But so, to me, if we're continually having false alarm calls within the town of Gilbert, we need to take the same corrective action that we're expecting and requiring our businesses to do. Each internal false alarm is taking those same patrols off their routes and by eliminating this and by eliminating this fee, we're not fixing the problem. So I guess I would like the council to consider fixing the problem as we expect our businesses to and hold ourselves accountable. Maybe there's a different way to hold ourselves accountable. I don't know what it is. But I I just don't think it's right that I had a town building, you know, twenty-five years that I was there as CEO, nineteen thirty-seven building, that got critters that set off alarms, and I was the closest one to the office. So guess who got every call from our our department? I mean, from our security team, and I had to go down there or I had to call the police. And so I understand that this happens, no matter how much you're trying. But I just feel we have to be accountable if we're expecting our businesses to. So if we're going to vote on these all at once, I'd like to pull that one off because unfortunately, I will be opposing this one.
Thank you. Like I said to Councilmember Torgerson, just keep track. I know you're keeping track of the one that you have an issue with, so we can always vote for a bunch together and some separately if we need to. Thanks. Oh, Councilmember Bonjivani?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Tilke. It's good for the goose, it's good for the rabbits. And, you know, if we expect residents and businesses to do this, then we should we should act the same.
Thanks, Chief. If you want to move on?
Yes, ma'am. Moving on to item number nineteen, special noise sources. This amendment seeks to expand the restriction to also, the current restriction to also apply to mechanical or electrical music instruments or music-producing devices equipped with an electrical amplifier or loudspeaker or or any instrument of any kind or character that emits unreasonable noises that originate from public areas within Gilbert. All that to say, we do deal with issues downtown area where currently, if if you have a vehicle and it has giant speakers and it's making some unreasonable noise, we have a mechanism to deal with that in this ordinance. We don't have a mechanism to deal with somebody who's holding an amplifier, which we deal with sometimes, and a microphone, and they're yelling, projecting their voice into a business and and/or setting up a makeshift concert right out on a sidewalk in front of a business. This helps us come up and engage them and say, explain, you know, the this restaurant's trying to to run their business and you can't just set up like an Ozzy Osbourne concert here on the sidewalk. It's just, you know, it's too loud and you can't do that.
Crazy train. I love that you went for Ozzy, Chief. I was just like, crazy train. It was appropriate. I've seen people in downtown Gilbert especially with a speaker and a microphone standing right in front of, let's use Whiskey Row, because they have a wide open wall there, right? And it has to be annoying to the people inside if this person is outside talking, singing, spouting. Yes. Any other questions on that one? Great. Next, Chief.
Believe that's it. I think that was item fourteen through nineteen plus number eleven.
Did you? Are you doing twelve and thirteen?
I'm not.
Oh, you're not doing twelve and thirteen?
Mayor, if I can clarify, looking back.
Yes.
So the ordinances that were discussed in twenty twenty-three at the study session were fourteen to nineteen. Number eleven and thirteen were discussed at the November nineteenth study session just last month. So those are the two items that Melanie, I think it was Melanie that presented on. So those were very recent discussions. And then twelve is MAG updates. Doesn't really have anything to do with these ordinance changes.
Thank you. I was just looking at Code of Gilbert sitting here at my agenda and not looking at the content of them.
They are separate.
They're all they're separate. Thank you, Chief. Any other comments or questions for Chief before he sits down? Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, ma'am.
Does anyone need any discussion on twelve or thirteen? Okay. Then I will go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the dais. If, again, if there's a group that you would like to put together, it would be easier. If there are separate ones that you'd like to pull off and discuss, we can, we sure can do that, too. Councilmember Tilke?
I just would like to pull number eighteen, please.
Councilmember Kaprowski?
I'll make a motion to approve items.
Hold on, because Councilmember Torgerson, I think, wants to pull one.
I want to remove fourteen and eighteen.
Fourteen and eighteen. And Councilmember Tilke hits that eighteen.
And nineteen, sorry.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve items eleven, twelve, thirteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Councilmember Kaprowski, seconded by Councilmember Bonjivani. Please vote. Motion passes six zero. Bring it back to the dais. We'll go to fourteen since we'll stay in order. Item number fourteen, Councilmember Torgerson.
I just, I I can't support something that leaves enough in there of reasonable and knowledge of what's appropriate on a vehicle. I hate it. I hate the fact that in my home, at night, I can hear it. But I feel there's at some point a better way to do it than this, and I don't want to leave that much up to subjectivity.
Councilmember Bonjivani?
Yeah. Councilmember Torgerson, are you okay with A, squealing of the tires, B, the horn, and revving of the engines and just not the exhaust right now?
I'm against the whole thing.
Okay.
Councilmember Kaprowski, did you have a comment on this one?
No, I was going to make a motion. Oh.
And Mayor, if I may, just to remind council, you have the ability to modify. You could remove a section, modify the language that's in here at your discretion.
Thank you, Chris. And I think Councilmember Bonjivani was just suggesting that, but I think it's all or nothing on this one at this point. Yeah. Councilmember Kaprowski's going to make a motion.
I'll move to approve item fourteen.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Kaprowski, seconded by Vice Mayor Anderson. Please vote. Motion passes five one with Councilmember Torgerson dissenting. Number eighteen, Councilmember Tilke.
I think I had my say and I won't be making a motion.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure if there was anything else you wanted to discuss. Anyone else have any comments or any discussion on item number eighteen, or would someone like to make a motion? So, okay, from the discussion that I just heard and the questions that I just heard, I would say that this council is not in favor of passing number eighteen, the way that it was presented in stance this evening. Is that correct? With that said, do we have to do anything or do we have to deny number eighteen? Make a motion to deny number eighteen?
No action is a denial.
Okay.
I would like to add, though, that that the language says alarm systems operated by the town, the county, the state, and the federal government. So if the concern is town facilities and but still allowing the exemption for county, state, and federal facilities, I don't know if we currently cite county properties, state properties, or federal properties, but I would question jurisdiction to do so. That's something that could, you could remove the town if you wanted to go forward with the exemption for the other governmental facilities or just take no action and it.
Dies here.
It dies here.
Councilmember Tilke?
I'm prepared to let this die right here. Thank you.
Okay. And no action means that eighteen doesn't move forward at all in any way? And then we move on to item nineteen, Councilmember Torgerson.
I've just, I'm no to anything that interferes with the First Amendment in that way, so I'm just a no.
Any other comments on item nineteen, or would someone like to make a motion?
I'll move to approve item nineteen.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Kaprowski, seconded by Councilmember Tilke. Please vote. Motion passes four two with Councilmembers Torgerson and Bonjivani dissenting. That's a difficult one. I understand both sides of that. I think that there's a point where we need to try and protect our businesses and some of it is just, we have the obnoxious use of the parking garage with the cars. You have obnoxious use of speakers out in front of businesses. Moving on to item number twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two. I'll open the public hearing. Does anyone want presentations on twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two? I'm seeing shaking heads. Twenty? You would like something on twenty? Okay. Staff, do we have somebody to present on item twenty Z twenty-four dash zero five? I can't even see who that is. Oh, it's Ava.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Ava Cutro, Planning Manager. I have a PowerPoint. It's the same one I gave at the work session. Would you like me to go through it or just summarize the bill? House Bill twenty-seven twenty sets standards and regulations for accessory dwelling units in town. Currently, the town of Gilbert allows both guest homes and secondary dwellings on single-family properties, six thousand square foot or greater. Under the new house bill, they'd be allowed on all properties, even single-family properties that are less than six thousand square feet in height. We currently require an additional onsite parking space per unit. We require that the architecture matches that of the main home. We require the setbacks to be the same as that of the main home. And we require a use permit so that neighbors are notified and aware that additional dwelling will be constructed on a lot. Under the new house bill, we will be restricted. We cannot do any of that on accessory dwelling units that are a thousand square feet or seventy-five percent of the square footage of the main home, whichever is less. We will still allow accessory dwelling units over a thousand square feet. Those we can require a use permit on, and we can require the setbacks the same as the main home. But for all other accessory dwelling units, the setbacks can be five foot from the rear and side property lines but must meet the front setbacks.
I'm sorry. It gets more bizarre every time we hear her make this presentation. I'm sorry. I'm not laughing at you, Ava.
Just because I like to have fun with this, can you tell me who the geniuses that came up with this are?
I will. I will. I'll 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 take that off of Ava's shoulder. That would be our state legislators. That would be our state legislators that are trying to increase housing options and opportunities within the state of Arizona. That's probably the nicest way I could say it.
That's far too complex.
Thank you, Ava. Appreciate it. Bring it back here to the dais for discussion. The reason that an item like this is being pulled to be discussed and having staff do a short presentation, not speaking for Councilmember Torgerson, but I know where his mindset is on this, is to make sure the public hears that these are not requirements that the town of Gilbert can do anything about. These are laws that our state legislators, along with our governor, put in place this past year, and they're putting requirements on the town that we have to lessen our requirements when it comes to allowing accessory dwelling units within people's yards. So you could have a five thousand square foot lot with a house that covers quite a bit of it and still be able to build an accessory dwelling unit. The town of Gilbert wouldn't be able to say anything about it. And it can be five feet from your neighbor's fence, so that means it could be five feet from your fence in your backyard. But a chicken coop has to be twenty-five feet away from a back fence. I'm just making a point here that the legislature has passed this year. So just so the public knows, when you get mad when your neighbors are building accessory dwelling units and you don't like the way they look, the town of Gilbert can't do anything about it because your state legislator's passed it. Everything's my fault until January seventh, and it's his fault. I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the dais. Number twenty.
A motion to approve item twenty?
I'll second the motion to approve this genius piece of code. Thank you.
I'm just going to add a caveat that we can't do anything about this. We have to have our regulations in place to meet the state law that's been put in place. So we have a motion by Councilmember Bonjivani, seconded by Councilmember Torgerson. Please vote. Motion passes six zero. Now we're on items twenty-one and twenty-two. Open public hearing. Would anyone like a presentations on items twenty-one and twenty-two?
Just real quick, so people can see what's what's happening here. Sixty seconds would be awesome.
Sixty seconds on twenty-one and twenty-two? Okay. Can I have someone come? Oh, I see Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Twenty-one is a minor amendment to our system development fee infrastructure improvement plan. We had two wells that were planned at sites. They need to be modified to different sites that might be viable wells. One of the sites we looked at, turns out it won't be. Two traffic signals that we anticipated that's where growth would go. That's not where growth went, so we needed at two different locations. No change in fees, just change in location for those two infrastructure pieces. Twenty-two is a state-required audit every two years. It audits, reviews the progress of our infrastructure improvement plan, including the collection and expenditure of system development fees. It is a clean audit that we got back, and so it's just there for your review and acceptance.
No, I just, thank you. That was like the most concise sixty seconds of my existence today. The, but I wanted people to be able to see that the the wells that are being planned, there is a cost to it. It's moving there, but this is where water's going. And the fact that the system development fees, which some people were adamant we don't do, are being spent for exactly the impacts that that have been created. So that as people come in and build, whether it's a business, a home, or apartments, the money's being spent where it's supposed to be spent. It costs a lot to tap into the stuff that you guys have created out here and to make sure that in the future, it's going to be able to handle everybody. So I just, I appreciate it. Thank you, Kelly.
Vice Mayor?
Basically, what you're saying is gross pays for gross.
Or I I can't help it. Or if somebody wants to add an accessory dwelling unit to their property. I'm sorry. I I couldn't. An ADU to their property. Great. Items twenty-one and twenty-two, I'll close and enclose the public hearing, bring it back to the dais. Would someone like to make a motion on both of those items?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second?
I have a motion by Councilmember Tilke, seconded by Councilmember Kaprowski. Please vote. Motion passes six zero. Moving to item twenty-two A, council administration item, presentation discussion in possible direction related to trees in the right-of-way of College Park Country Estates. I will open the public hearing and bring up Jessica Marlowe.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council.
Good evening.
Waiting for my presentation.
Again, the clerk's office does a great job.
Yes, and I did get this to him a little late, so thank you for the switch out. Okay, thank you. Yes, I'm here today to talk about College Park Country Estates landscape maintenance and specifically the trees and the the town rights of way. So just to orient you, College Park Country Estates is located on the northwest corner of Lindsay and Guadalupe. Here is a diagram of approximately forty trees that the town of Gilbert has been maintaining in this subdivision. The little green dots on the map indicate where all of the trees in the subdivision are, and then the eucalyptus trees, which are kind of specific to the topic of conversation this evening, are identified as well. You can see most of them are along Riada with a couple on the the outer, outer roadways. So per our land development code, the maintenance responsibility for landscaping in the rights of way is the responsibility of adjacent property owners, whether it's an individual, a corporation, a property owners' association, or a homeowners' association. And this is the only subdivision in the entire town of Gilbert where the town is still maintaining the trees and landscaping within the interior streets of the subdivision. All of the others either have an HOA, property management, a PKID that has been formed and paid for by those residents, or the individual property owners taking that maintenance responsibility. Oh. Yeah, this one didn't get switched out. Apologies. So a little bit of a history of the timeline. This subdivision was platted in nineteen seventy-two, and then the homes were built subsequent to that in the late nineteen seventies. In nineteen eighty-two is when that property, the landscape maintenance code, was adopted. And dating back to nineteen nineties, staff had recognized a concern with these eucalyptus trees in the subdivision and began removing the trees. and began removing the trees. And then stopped at the request of the neighbors because there was a significant amount of input that the council was receiving as related to those activities. So in February of twenty-eight, the town council took some action related to this particular subdivision. So it recognized that this subdivision did not have an HOA or a PKID, Parkway Maintenance Improvement District, to maintain the right-of-way in common areas. But we had received multiple claims for reimbursement for damage to fences, automobiles, and personal property within the subdivision as a result of limb drop from these trees. So at the time, town staff had recommended to remove the trees and replace them with some less maintenance-intensive and unsafe trees. And so, as I mentioned, the removal of those trees began in November but was halted due to neighbor objections. And then council action took place in February of nineteen ninety-eight to approve landscape maintenance services for this subdivision. There was obviously a lot of discussion with the residents about who was going to maintain the trees. The town entered into an agreement with a contractor to maintain the trees. And while an agreement was referenced, we have not been able to find any actual agreement between the town or the neighborhood. There's no entity to enter into an agreement to other than individual property owners. So it was also noted in that meeting, though, that there was a concern that there are other neighborhoods within the community who might view this type of increased level of care of the trees as unequal treatment and request the council to also maintain the trees in their neighborhood. So there was like a notice that this was not something that the town normally did, but it moved forward anyways. And so I do actually want to just have Chris speak a little bit more to the agreement itself and the ordinance that was passed and kind of the applicability to the subdivision.
Yeah, so if you're looking at the timeline here, Mayor and Council, actually, could you go back to the prior slide?
Yeah.
There we go. We'll start here. So when the plats were approved in the seventies, or plat was approved in nineteen seventy-two, there's no language on the plat that obligates the town to maintain the rights-of-way, right? The dedications are made, the rights-of-way, they're town-owned rights-of-way. And then when, in nineteen eighty-two, when the then-town council, the town council at the time, adopted the right-of-way landscape maintenance requirements, it did so under the power and authority that the town has to adopt such types of ordinances, which is generally called the police power of the council. And any plat adopted prior to that nineteen eighty-two council action, they're not grandfathered and they're not exempt. They're subject to that council ordinance like every other plat that came in after that. And then on the other slide, Jessica, with that nineteen ninety-eight council action, as Jessica referenced, it talks about an agreement, but there was no agreement that we could find. There wasn't an agreement in the minutes, or we couldn't find an actual written agreement. As we know, an agreement is a contract between two parties or multiple parties that's enforceable. We could not find an agreement, even though the council communication talked about an agreement. So we think it's more like the town council at the time, their decision to say, hey, we're going to go ahead and we're going to maintain these trees. We'll replace some of those that we removed. But we're not aware of any actual written agreement or enforceable agreement, likely because, as Jessica said, this neighborhood, it's not an HOA. So there's no entity that you could even contract with absent individual written agreements between the town and individual property owners.
Thank you, Chris. So moving forward, starting then again back up in twenty eighteen, we received additional claim for property damage related to a eucalyptus tree dropping its limb. And over, between then and twenty twenty-three, there have been several more. So our team again went out and started looking at the trees and saying, we really need to do something about this. And again, received feedback from the residents, which prompted us to come to council with a discussion in executive session last year. And then as a result of that, we held public meeting and came up with some options for the residents for the maintenance of the trees going forward. So this is a picture of a few of the trees. We're talking about these very large red gum eucalyptus trees are the main tree of concern when it comes to risk and liability. Just since fall of twenty-three, we've had three claims submitted to the town in excess of fifteen thousand dollars, which have been settled for around ten thousand dollars. Those are relatively small dollar amounts. The bigger concern that the town has is regarding the risk of injury to people or to pets, to horses, to living beings that could be injured by these limbs dropping, not just the property damage. And because we know that they are a risk and they are a liability, our sort of responsibility legally is considerably greater because we know there is a risk and we have not done anything about it yet. So we did have an assessment done by an arborist that went out and rated all of the different trees in terms of their likelihood of impact to surrounding structures and people, likelihood of failure, consequence of failure, and overall risk. And while most of the trees were rated at an overall risk of low, we just in the last few months, one of those low-rated risks had a limb drop that crushed a shed. So without any warning and without any, it wasn't a storm event or anything, you know, that would have instigated it other than the fact that it just, these trees, and this is what the arborist said, are susceptible to an industry-recognized syndrome called sudden summer branch drop that often occurs in warm temperatures, which obviously we have a lot of here. And then once it loses a branch, it's more likely to lose more branches and have future failures because of the imbalance that it creates when a limb drops. So we have, F-three is identified here. That's the one that just recently had a limb drop. F-one was actually recently already removed because of line-of-sight issues and damage that was occurring to the driveway that was adjacent to it. So we were originally talking about nine eucalyptus trees, and now we're talking about eight eucalyptus trees because one of them has already been removed. So on February seventh, we held a public meeting for the neighbors, sent notices to fifty-eight different addresses. There aren't fifty-eight homes in the neighborhood, but we sent them to both occupants and property owners if it's not owner-occupied. And we had twenty-three residents in attendance at that meeting. What was shared at the meeting was that Gilbert would be removing all of the eucalyptus trees that have been identified as a hazard, which is all of them, which is a total of, it was nine, now eight. But that Gilbert will continue to maintain the remaining non-eucalyptus trees until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven, unless a PKID is formed, and I'll get to that in a minute. But then as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven, the remaining trees would be subject to the town code in terms of the maintenance would then become the property owners', adjacent property owners' responsibility. So we're only talking about removing the eucalyptus trees due to the risk and liability, and then turning the maintenance of the remaining trees over to the property owners or a PKID if the property owners were supportive of that option. So a little bit about PKIDs, that they can be formed for the purpose of operation, maintenance, repair, and improvements of these types of facilities. And a PKID, in this case, if it were formed, would be, would maintain all of the remaining trees in the subdivision minus the eucalyptus trees, including the frontage of Lindsay and Guadalupe, which is kind of the arterial boundaries of the subdivision, so that we could include those in the PKID as well. So we haven't formed a PKID for a very long time, nineteen ninety-one, yes. There are eleven PKIDs currently in Gilbert that have just over two thousand homes covered under them. And the council or the neighborhood can initiate that process. Historically, the council initiated the process, and then there's what's called a protest period to where if there are neighbors that protest and don't want the PKID formed, then they can stop the process. But in, you know, in this case, we were looking to the residents and saying, hey, if you want to do this, there's a lot of statutory requirements and a lot of effort that goes into forming the PKID. So we wouldn't want to start that process unless we had the majority of the property owners interested in doing so. And really, the main goal of the PKID would be to ensure the proper maintenance of these trees and to equitably distribute the cost for the maintenance of the trees to all of the property owners within the subdivision, not just the ones that have them adjacent to their property. Because as many of the residents have said, this is something that makes their community, you know, has character, and they enjoy the trees, even though they may not have trees on their own property. So they wouldn't have, under the normal town code, any responsibility to maintain them. So then following the public meeting, we got some more feedback regarding the eucalyptus trees because we're saying, we're going to remove the eucalyptus trees. They are a hazard. They are a liability, and we know this, and we need to take care of it. But wanted to give the residents another option to be able to keep those particular trees if they wanted to. And so we worked with our legal team to develop an agreement that would give them the ability to accept the maintenance and liability for the eucalyptus trees adjacent to their property. And then they could have that going forward, and we would not remove the trees. So that was the letter that was referenced at the last council meeting. That letter was sent to the six property owners that have eucalyptus trees adjacent to their property. And that was sent back in, on November seventh. So to date, we are awaiting responses to those letters for either accepting or rejecting that responsibility. We actually have gotten two letters back saying, we don't want it. Take them out. And the date, December sixteenth date, which was yesterday, was what was referenced as kind of the deadline for wanting to get those responses back, and that if we hadn't, then the trees would be removed after that point, which I think there was a little bit of confusion there. So but then, that going forward, Gilbert will continue to maintain the non-eucalyptus trees until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven, or until a PKID is formed. And then after that, we did also offer a one-time courtesy removal. If anybody didn't want to maintain even the other trees on the property, we would remove those as well if they weren't wanting to accept that maintenance responsibility. Otherwise, that maintenance responsibility would then revert to the property owners. And that's all I have. Questions and discussion?
Jessica, great job on the presentation.
Thank you.
You took the notes that I can remember from our meeting with you last night and really did a great job outlining all of that. Any questions or comments from council at this time? Okay, let's save those till after we hear from the public.
I have one.
Oh, Councilmember Bon Giovanni.
Thank you, ma'am. So have, you received two letters back. Do you have any indication that you would be receiving the other letters shortly? Has anyone communicated with you?
No, they have not.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jessica. Why don't you take a seat, and we'll start the public comment. Appreciate you and the work you're doing. I got ten slips, but four people said they did not wish to speak. I have a no from Carrie Welsh, Seth Lindfors, Stephen Welsh, and Joel Marzen, I think it says. I apologize if I butcher your names. So I have a few slips from people that would like to speak. I have one that is sharing their time. So I will go ahead and start with that person. I have Allison, who is sharing her time with Brendan Wood. So if Brendan would come to this podium in the middle here, you'll get six minutes to speak to the council.
Hello, Mayor and councilmembers. You may remember me. I'm Brendan Wood, a resident of College Park Country Estates. I wanted to start by thanking you for adding this important issue so quickly to the agenda. First, I'd like to say that there, I have an original easement agreement that was signed by the town, which agrees to the grantee, which is the town of Gilbert, agrees to pay all damages, injuries, and losses to persons, fences, as well as improvements. The town defines improvements, and it includes landscaping. I have that document here with me if you'd like to review it. Also, the streets department keeps saying that we're the sole neighborhood that they provide maintenance for. That's not true. They also maintain all of the neighborhoods surrounding the Heritage District because they were also accepted before nineteen eighty-two. Also, the arborist report, all the trees except two of them were deemed low-risk. Also, the one that did lose the limb, it's suggested in that report that if a limb is lost and needs to be trimmed to maintain the balance of the canopy. The streets department did not do that maintenance. You know, the tree needed to be trimmed. They didn't do it. Also, the denial of responsibility does not mean the residents want the trees taken away. It means that they're not voluntarily going to assume maintenance responsibility because it's the obligations of the town to maintain them. I hope that you guys consider what this neighborhood means to all of our residents here. I know a lot of them aren't wanting to speak tonight, but if you guys could raise your hands of who's here in our neighborhood to support the trees, that'd be amazing. So that's all I have to say, you guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brendan. Next, we'll have Robert Pharo. Oh, it looks like Robert wanted to donate his time, but it says you also wish to speak, so you can't do both. Yes, Rose. Then you'll come on down, and Robert is donating his time to you. Is Robert here? Okay, thank you.
Mayor, could the one document you have be shared with Chris?
Yes. Brendan, can you please share the document that you have with our clerk's office right here? Judy will come over and get that from you. Thank you, councilmember. Judy, do you need to run and make a copy of that? Or Brendan, is that a copy of that document? Thank you, Judy. We'll give Rose six minutes on the timer.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. I want to echo Brendan in a sincere gratitude for taking this issue very seriously and getting it on the agenda so quickly. I also want to thank Jessica for providing the presentation. It would have been really beneficial to have had that, to be able to put notes, but I did take notes as she was speaking. Based on the presentation that was provided at the meeting where she said that there was about twenty or thirty residents in attendance, there was some factual misrepresentation that were listed on several slides. And I know for me, in my business, I'm responsible for making billion-dollar decisions, and I rely on a team, actually multiple teams, to provide me critical data. And I try to make as factual-based decisions as possible. And I think that all of you are doing the same thing, right? You need to be and rely on the departments to give you all of the right information. And some of the things that has been represented just aren't true. And so, as Brendan's already pointed out, this is not the only neighborhood. It may be the only neighborhood with such large, beautiful trees, but it's not the only neighborhood. The entire Heritage District is under the same responsibility, and I think all of you know that. Now, from the other slides, I put the readers on because I'm old. The fact that, the fact that the, there is no stated agreement or on the plat seems to be in contradictory to what Brendan is providing. The plat definitely indicates that there is an obligation, and it was approved by the city council. So now, furthermore, back in ninety-eight, when this issue was brought up, there happened to be, I believe, the mayor and a council member living in this neighborhood. And so it was well-known that these trees are very beneficial. So it's unfortunate that wasn't documented well in nineteen ninety-eight, but it certainly doesn't relieve the city of its obligations, right? It's clear in the minutes of that meeting. If the town is so concerned for personal safety, I think that Patterson Elementary School should become an immediate priority. Because if any of you go to that area, it is completely surrounded with similar eucalyptus trees. And I know for the welfare of those children, that should be a priority. Now, from the tree removal, the tree that was on F-one that was removed due to line-of-sight, there was no line-of-sight hazard ever identified. We did a public records request, and it was indicated that it We did a public records request, and it was indicated that it wasn't established. The fact that she has reiterated they have been identified as a hazard is just simply not substantiated. Matter of fact, the Arborist report indicates that they're low risk, and we also have looked at the maintenance records, and it shows that if they were properly maintained, we probably wouldn't have had a limb fall. So it's definitely a concern. So when I think about the final decision, there are rarely times in my business that I get to actually do nothing, and it's the right decision. And I'm asking you to consider to maintain the original agreement, the original beauty of this neighborhood, and actually do some good for the neighborhood, right? I've got a quote here in front of me, and oddly, it's Mark Twain, which is not somebody I would typically be quoting. But it says, "It ain't what you don't know that gets you in trouble. It's what you know for sure just ain't so." And what I know for sure is it is not right, everything that's happening. These trees are gorgeous. Last time I spoke, I think you'll recall, I held up a page from the plan for shade and maintenance, and this very, very town, this very, very road with these trees are highlighted. So for the removal of that, you would have to... You are a Tree City of USA. Gilbert has named one of them. You would have to identify that you consciously made a decision to remove the shade canopy that you boasted about and highlighted in your plan. And then lastly, I'd like to consider the budget. I don't know what it's going to cost to remove all these trees, but it can't be within your budget. And the maintenance costs have been pretty minimal, and I think Rayanne Wood's going to talk about that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Moving on to Rayanne Wood. Rayanne will get three minutes to speak.
Thank you again, as they have said, for allowing us to present here today. I guess the first thing I would like to talk about, well, Brendan already provided the easement agreement that talked about the town does have the responsibility for the maintenance of those. Another thing that the presenter from you guys mentioned was that there was no minutes from the agreement that we had. Luckily, Brendan Wood has done lots of research and asked for town records. But anyway, I have here the council communication from the 1996 to the 1998, right-of-way maintenance issues. And I'm not going to read the whole thing, but on the second page, it talks about what they agreed to. And there are six items that they agreed to. The town will replace the four removed trees with 15-gallon black eucalyptus trees. The town will remove and replace four additional trees that have been identified and unhealthy and maintained, the cost of $4,800. Proper pruning of the four remaining trees, estimated cost of $6,300. Biannual deep-root feeding of all the right-of-way trees, including 17 eucalyptus, eight cotton woods, five bottle trees, one pine tree, an estimated cost of $1,100. Reworking of existing irrigation systems to make sure there's water is $1,350. Remove and replacement of six dead or hazardous trees, interior subdivision, again with 15-gallon box eucalyptus trees. There will be an ongoing cost of $8,000 to provide second-year pruning and deep-water feeding, deep-root feeding. So there was an agreement that they would maintain our trees every two years. And that's from the council minutes. Next, we did a public search on maintenance costs in our area from 2023 to 2018, so the last six years. So in 2023, there was a total cost of $8,383. But what I'd like to identify more is the group pruning. Group pruning in 2023, they did prune 25 trees at $3,900. In 2022, they pruned zero trees. In 2021, zero trees. In 2022, again, 26 trees at $2,500. In 2019, zero trees, and in 2018, 26 trees. So basically, three of the last six years, there was no pruning. And two consecutive years, there was no pruning. So you wonder why limbs are falling. Well, it's because the trees have not been maintained according to the minutes that they agreed that they would do that. On average, the six-year cost to maintain these trees was $3,650. And I guess lastly, since I heard a bell, I'm out of time, would be that I would also state that some of the facts in that first meeting were untrue, and I think there's some additional ones that weren't brought to your attention today. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Ma'am, could you share those documents with Chevelli, please?
Next up to the podium will be Lester Pierce. You'll have three minutes, Lester.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, thank you for the time to be here and discuss our trees. I moved to Gilbert about seven and a half years ago because I liked what I saw. It was a non-homeowner association. It was acre lots. It had certain benefits. Part of it was the beauty of the trees. Now, I was a builder and developer for a number of years, along with a number of other things, if you wanted the whole resume. But one of the things I've found is Gilbert, at that time, was a good community. And I was moving into a neighborhood that I thought was going to be a beautiful community. And then one day, I noticed our cutting down one of the great big trees, and I went over and asked why. Says, "Well, it's diseased." I have that tree at my house. It's not diseased. There was no disease in that tree. It was just not pruned. Now, as I looked at... Coming to Gilbert, I looked at the requirements of that community. I did not want to live in a homeowners' association. And now we have a recommendation to make a PKID, which is basically a homeowners' association. The people in the community are already basically maintaining those trees because the town at Gilbert does not, as far as watering, mowing, taking care of the landscape. But they don't climb up in the top of those big trees and prune them like they should be. So I'm here to say that I'm happy with the trees that are there. They do need pruned. I could give you all the other information that they just gave you, but it's been done. And I would suggest that we maintain the beauty of the community with the big trees. And if they're diseased, yes, they need to come out. They do need to be pruned. But Gilbert has agreed to certain maintenance and requirements, and I believe that would be grandfathered in because it was set up. And to require us to develop a PKID would be going against that. And I know you've done that a number of times in our community. People agreed to that, but I don't see our neighborhood wanting to agree to that. We have a beautiful neighborhood, and we have great neighbors, close friends, and we take Gilbert as being a wonderful place to live. So any questions? I'd be happy to answer any.
Thank you, Lester. I don't see any. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Melanie Rodriguez. Melanie, you'll have three minutes also.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I appreciate your time, and I appreciate you bringing us to the council tonight. I know it wasn't part of the original two weeks ago when we came before. And again, of course, I was busy with work, and busy with home, and busy with kids, and I didn't prepare my words. So reflecting back on the presentation, we had a meeting in February last year and then received a letter November of this year. In between, there was no other communication, no other reference, no other conversation. So what I would ask of you tonight is to continue that conversation, make the direction and decision to be that the town continues the conversation. It was also stated tonight that only two people responded to the letters. I personally called the attorney's office, the manager's office, and the streets office. Only Mr. Gordon returned my call. How is that a communication? I would like to have a communication with what's going on. The trees are an integral part of the neighborhood. They have been there since the '70s. It has been plotted, and some of my neighbors have shown you those documents tonight. I'm looking at the time. I'm sorry. So what I would like is that we continue the conversation, get something going, because while we have a number of our residents here, it does not represent everyone. And I know there is continuum on what the decision could be. It could be remove all of the trees. It could be remove just the eucalyptus. It could be a PKID. It could be a public-private agreement, a memorandum of agreement, whatever, one of those governmental things that we can do. I know other things are available, and I'm sorry, again, I'm not the speaker that Ms. Connor is. The letter I received stated that the trees would begin to be removed sometime after the 16th if you do not accept the responsibility. So that was put on individual members and only... Individual residents, and only allowed those individuals to make the decision for the entire neighborhood. Additionally, it says that all the remaining trees in the right-of-way will only be maintained until June 2027. So it's not just the eucalyptus. It's all of the trees. We need to make a decision on where we're going to go forward. And it's not just for four years. It's for 40 years. I've been a resident for 20, and I intend to stay. We would like to look at the economic impact statement on this. If you have a square mile of residential, what is the impact to the town for that versus what do we cause? We don't have sewer. I support your sewer replacements. I'm out of time. If you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, ma'am. Those are all the speakers that we have tonight. I'm going to ask Jessica to come back up and maybe speak to a couple of things that we heard, and then if you have any questions for her at that time. Jessica, please. Were you taking notes, Jessica? I know you.
Mayor, members of council, I was taking a few. Were there specific questions you wanted to share, or...?
Well, if you were taking notes, the things that I heard were... I read the easement because Judy already sent it to us. The Heritage District maintenance, maybe we should talk to that because that's a concern that's been brought up.
Yes. So we do maintain the neighborhoods adjacent to the Heritage District. Those are right-of-way improvements that the town installed, irrigation and grass and things. And the Heritage District is kind of a unique situation. There are a lot of services we provide in Heritage District that we don't provide anywhere else in town, and that landscape maintenance is part of it. There is some of the landscape there that we do not maintain, and that's actually a topic of conversation that's come up, that we would actually like to maintain that because some of the businesses are just chopping trees back and not maintain in a way that makes them, you know, look aesthetically pleasing in the district. So that is also an ongoing topic of conversation. But the improvements that we maintain in the Heritage District are improvements that we installed as part of that sort of redevelopment-beautification process, and so that is why we do maintain them.
And I'm assuming that's because we have named that Heritage District in the community, and it's a special...
A redevelopment area. Yes.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Jessica, the neighbors have mentioned there have been some factual inaccuracies in some of our presentations. Are you aware of those? Have they made you aware of what inaccuracies there are?
No, Mayor, members of council, no. You know, I am going off of all the information that I know myself and I have gotten from our Streets team regarding, you know, the public meeting that was held and all the documents we could find. We do have a copy of those minutes from the 1998 meeting, and that's where we're referring to the fact that it does reference an agreement. The agreement that was approved at that council meeting was just the annual contract for that next year for the maintenance, as well as those requirements that... Or the different tasks that were assigned to the contractor for that year in terms of replacing trees and doing some work on the irrigation. But that's just a once-a-year thing that then has to be renewed every year, and it has been renewed every year. West Coast Arborists, who completed the assessment for us, is under contract to do all the maintenance for all of the trees within the town, including this area. So when they're pruning or not pruning, that's at their discretion based on their inspection and their determination of the need, but they do have a contract, and they do all of that work for us.
Any other questions for Jessica? Councilmember Torrison?
I realize it's at their discretion from what you're saying, but when we were looking at these the other day, some of them are 65 feet tall.
Some of them are... Yes, they are very tall. I don't know exactly how tall, but they are very tall.
Would it be worth asking maybe why they maybe not have been serviced in several years?
We could definitely ask them why there was a gap in the two years. It looked like it was generally every other year, but there was a two-year gap, and then they were done in 2023. And I'm sure they probably weren't done this year because of all the ongoing conversations we were having. I did want to speak to the kind of gap in terms of the public meeting to the notice going out, and the resident is correct, there wasn't communication, and that was definitely something we could have done a better job at. We did provide a website to the residents that they could check in on periodically that had some information on it, hasn't been updated a ton. But we were working with the legal team to try to come up with a way that the residents could, again, accept maintenance and liability for specifically the red gum eucalyptus trees. And I will also clarify that there was never an intent to remove all of the trees in the neighborhood. It was only the red gum eucalyptus trees that are known for this branch drop and that we have identified as a legal risk and liability to people. Like, that's what our concern is, making sure that we don't... That somebody doesn't get injured in this. And we saw an article just yesterday of a gentleman in California that had a eucalyptus tree limb fall on his truck, and he was in a vehicle, and he couldn't move his vehicle out of the way fast enough, and it crushed his truck. And fortunately, he wasn't injured, but, you know, it doesn't take much. And so that's where our biggest concern is, is protecting the public safety component of it. And because it is a spontaneous limb drop, you can prune and take good care of it, but some of these trees are 50 years old, and they... It could just be they're reaching the end of their natural life anyways and need to be replaced with something else so that they don't cause more damage.
Councilmember Juan Giovanni, sorry. Were you finished, Councilmember Torrison?
Well, I just... And having seen some of these come out of the ground in Scottsdale, like when there was a few storms, I'm going to say two years ago. I can't really remember. But, I mean, watching it come down, it didn't hit me, but it was a good 100 yards in front of me. It's pretty stout when they come down, but these trees in the right climate last 1,000 years. I don't... Literally, they're 500 to 1,000-year-old tree, like if it's on, I don't know, Australia. Are they really grown... In Arizona, is it something that affects its lifespan, its brittleness? I have no idea, and I'm just asking.
Mayor, members of council, I'm not an arborist either, so I don't know. I will say that, you know, the fact that there is no established irrigation for these trees probably contributes to... They get flood irrigated there, but there's no actual irrigation that can be properly maintained and managed that way. I'm sure it contributes to the health or lack thereof of the trees. I will also note that the eucalyptus trees are not a tree that's currently allowed going forward, like new eucalyptus trees are not getting put in in the town as part of our Shade and Streetscape Master Plan that was referenced or any of our street character areas. So it's known it identifies as a hazard, and we... I don't know how long it's been the case, but we don't put new eucalyptus trees in the town either.
I remember people talking about this. It has to do with the root system because if they're not irrigated, they're going out rather than deep?
That's correct. Most irrigation, you do deep-watering irrigation, and this happens in all neighborhoods, in my own front yard. Like, my tree roots are very shallow. You can see them through the grass because they're not deep-watered. And so this is the case with the flood irrigation. The roots go where they want to go, but they don't necessarily go down, which is why part of that maintenance agreement that was referenced earlier, in terms of what the contractor does, was deep-root watering to try to help sustain that. But, you know, we had a picture. We didn't include it in this presentation because it wasn't from this neighborhood, but in an adjacent neighborhood where one of these trees went over in a storm a couple years ago, and the root ball was probably at least 15 feet wide. feet wide across, Robert was standing in the hole, and it was like more than twice as tall as he is, but it was not very deep. It's very wide, but not very deep.
Councilmember Juan Giovanni?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Jessica, I know you're not an arborist, and neither am I. But if these trees were maintained every year and maybe cut some from the top, and I don't know if you can answer this, but would chances be that they would be a little bit more safe than they are now?
Mayor, Members of Council, I really couldn't answer that. All I know is the arborists have told us that they are known for spontaneous limb drop, which means it doesn't have to have a reason, it just can spontaneously fall. So whether, whether improved or more frequent pruning or maintenance would reduce that likelihood, I don't, I don't know.
Did it mention any, anywhere in their report spontaneous limb drop having to do with any, any height issues?
I don't recall. It was more related to temperature and storm activity.
Thank you.
I couldn't find a database for Arizona, but there is a Western Tree Failure Database for California, California Tree Failure Report Program, and the third top tree on the list is the eucalyptus. The first one is a quercus that we, Patrick and I looked it up earlier, and I can't remember, and the second one's a type of pine tree, but the first type is fifteen hundred trees this year have fallen. The second pine tree, eleven hundred and thirty-two, they've had issues, and the eucalyptus was eight hundred and thirty-eight trees that they've had issues with. And then the next closest, the fourth in line, is only three hundred and forty-eight trees. So when you look at a database and statistics like that, and it's the third popular tree to, unfortunately, to fail, it creates a situation. And I thought of it when you were asking about that, because it's a database in the western part of, of, I don't like California-type databases, but in this case, it's the closest thing I could find. Did anyone else have any comments or questions? I see you in notes. Yes, Councilmember Kaproski.
You know, as a council member and a, and a resident, I really value the beauty and character that these trees bring to our neighborhoods, and so I definitely understand the attachment that the neighborhood feels towards these eucalyptus trees. However, you know, the eight trees identified for removals, you know, appear to have some really significant risks and liability to the town. The falling limbs are causing damage to private property and creating other hazards if anything else was below them. So it's not a decision that's made lightly, but seems like it's out of necessity to kind of protect the well-being of the community. And for the remaining, you know, trees, I would support the forming of the Parkway Improvement District so that the neighborhood can take ownership of, of the maintenance. I live in a, in a neighborhood that has a PKID, my, my mother lives in a neighborhood that has a PKID, and it seems to be a really equitable and low-cost way to cover that. And the, the company that the town hires seems to do a pretty good job at that, and we meet with the Parks Director Coordinator for that each year to talk about that. And it's not in any way similar to an HOA, and I've lived in an HOA as well, and, and the costs are much, much lower for that. But I do think that the cost should not be burdened, or should not burden all of the other taxpayers, but rather be shared by those who benefit directly in the neighborhood. I mean, as a council, I think that we are here to support the process of that PKID formation if that is identified, but appreciate, you know, the understanding that we need to prioritize the fairness of, prioritize the safety of our community, but also the fairness of maintaining these streets.
Councilmember Juan Giovanni?
Thank you, Mayor. Are we okay with general comments, or do we want Jessica still?
Anyone else have more questions for Jessica, or call her up as needed?
Okay.
Thanks, Jessica.
Thanks.
Great job again.
Um, thank you, Mayor. Full disclosure, you know, my business uses a home for training on Rihanna, so I know the area very, very well. But, you know, there's a couple of questions. Who owns the trees, you know, in that right-of-way? Because when you own something, you can do with it what you want to do. But again, who owns the trees? Is it the town government, you know, or is it the people who own the trees? And if the question is the people, people that, people own the trees, and do the people benefit in Gilbert from these trees? Well, Gilbert was ranked last in sustainability. The tree canopy enhances the neighborhood in that area, and the neighborhood, the neighborhood and area, or, I'm sorry, trees also reduce concrete islands. However, we also have to balance the benefits with liabilities for our taxpayers. We owe it to our taxpayers to maintain the benefits of these trees. We also owed it to them to protect them against liabilities and injury. I think we're extremely lucky right now that these trees haven't hurt people or animals, but they have suffered some property damage. But to be very honest, personally, I don't feel comfortable moving forward with anything until we have a full document review from Chris with things that he received today.
And this evening, we're not going to take a vote, we're going to offer direction to staff if need be. Any other comments, questions? Vice Mayor?
Just briefly, I, I'd like, I agree that the documents need to be reviewed. It gets to the point that I was trying to make, it seems as though we're at an impasse of some kind on agreeing some facts, because we're hearing one side from our attorney, we're hearing from the residents, something different. And so we need to get that all clarified. And I like what Ms. Rodriguez presented, is we're going to get to a resolution of this somehow. And if we have to take a little more time to do that, I'm in favor of doing that, so we can get it done, we can choose one of those options that you, you talked about when you were speaking to us. Because we've got to get to an option on what's going to happen with the trees, what's going to happen with the future of either maintaining them or taking them out, whatever it may be, but we need to get to that point, and I don't think we're quite yet, there yet, and I'm in favor of continuing to talk about it.
Councilmember Torreson?
I, I would like those documents to be reviewed so we know where we sit exactly, to see if someone had put us in a position of, well, I mean, for lack of better terms, not keeping our word. And, but I am concerned by seeing what has happened with some of these mature trees. I grew up in California, and although maybe I'd like to see the government failure chart instead, the, I had seen a lot of trees fall, and we're much more severe as far as our climate goes, and what the impact on that tree would be. Is it, not just keeping our word, but is it actually, are we actually putting ourselves at risk identifying something that's not appropriate to be there just because we have an agreement? Do we keep it there when it can cause harm? Because what happens if somebody is hurt? We keep it going, we've tried our best, but somebody gets hurt, and we are responsible. We, as in two-hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eleven people, are responsible because we were remiss, and we agreed to do something that wasn't safe. So I'd like to, I'd like to, I hate to say it, kick the can down the road a minute and have you look at that and sit and discuss this, maybe in executive session soon.
Councilmember Kaproski?
I do believe that the adjacent property owners that just received the letter in November, I do believe that we should give direction to staff to extend the time that they have to respond. And so if anyone could suggest a timeline for that, I think that'd be one of the components we should do tonight.
Well, considering the fact was brought up that they had the meeting in February, and out of that came this idea to then send just those residents some sort of a potential agreement that they could enter into with the town, and we all know, I'm going to say it right here, government doesn't move quickly. Any form of government doesn't move quickly. We had to, I'm sure attorneys look at what an option would be to write up such agreement, because we have to be careful as to how we enter into an official agreement with each individual homeowner in that situation. So that's what took that time from February to November, not trying to excuse it, trying to explain it to the residents that are here. Councilmember Kaproski makes a great point that that deadline was yesterday, and to give direction to staff to extend that deadline so that all of these other documents that have been presented can be investigated, and that the council will be able to have an executive session in the future to discuss that. But with that said, my, my issues with this is, one, we have a neighborhood that we're treating quite differently than other neighborhoods, and I know that there's a claim of an agreement from nineteen ninety-eight. The former councils can't lock future councils into, we can always change something as a council. A council can always update things because things change, because we have issues that arise, because state law changes, because local ordinances arise that we need to be able to enforce things. And when you have something that could potentially be a failure and a danger that we have seen already with liabilities, then that has to be considered. And I don't, I never liked treating a neighborhood different than any other neighborhood. We haven't entered in, and I asked this question in our exec session, which was how many, when was the last time we entered into a PKID, which Jessica answered this evening, because I could not remember one, and it hasn't been since nineteen ninety-one. The PKID might solve the future of the maintenance of the trees, but it's not going to solve the situation of the liability for the eucalyptus trees. If you as residents that have those eucalyptus trees next to your property want to take that on right now, that would solve this, and that was the agreement that was sent out to the six residents that have the eight trees. That would solve this, simply, with moving forward with that. And that's the issue that the council had, that we were presented with, that we had to find a resolution for. The staff came to us and said, we found this option based on discussions with these residents, that they may want to take on this liability, but now people don't want to take on the liability. And I can understand that you're saying that it belongs, but when it's a liability on the town, we have two-hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eleven people to be concerned with, and the cost of that, and what could happen in the future based on these trees. My thoughts, I won't be handling this because it'll be moving forward. I think we all agree that we would like staff to look at the documents, reevaluate what you've seen tonight, plan a future study, I mean, executive session to discuss this with the council, once you have maybe gone through those documents. And we would like to give a, give a direction to extend the deadline from December sixteenth, yesterday, till... Vice Mayor?
I was just going to say that executive session is good, but we need to continue our conversations with the neighborhood.
Mm-hmm. But right now, we need to work on what's current, which is the deadline from yesterday, and the documents that have been presented.
March thirty-first is three months into the new year. We should add something before that.
March thirty-first, at this point, I'm hearing, anybody have a, another recommendation? So we're asking for a deadline extension for the letters that were sent out to the six homers, to homeowners, to March thirty-first. It doesn't mean that you can't also send those back and agree to them, that's always a possibility too. I'm going to throw it out there because it's a possibility. And for legal staff to, and Public Works to work on the documents that we've received to take a look at those, and bring it back to council. Good? Thank you all for coming out tonight. We knew that there wasn't going to be any kind of a decision, but at least there's a conversation going on, and since February, there's been a conversation going on, it's just that it halted because of legal stuff that had to happen in between that finally got sent out to you. No trees are going to be removed at this point in time. You'll wait until March thirty-first at this point before anything else will change. No clapping, please. No clapping, please. Thank you very much. We're going to take a recess, and we will come right back. I'll give a 30-second warning, give Torgasen, Councilmember Torgasen enough time to get up here. You don't have to run, you don't have to run. Okay, we'll go ahead and reconvene our meeting. Moving on to the consent calendar, I will pass off to Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I think we're gonna do the same thing that we had done previously. We have a number of items that there's interest, and I think we're getting a presentation from staff on those items.
Okay.
We got that presentation ready? Patrick?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, they're pulling it up now.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can you guys hear me okay? The question is, can you see me okay? I know I'm barely taller than a Christmas elf over here, but I just wanna make sure you can hear me and see me. My name's Katie Devonuto. I think I've met everybody on council. I'm the business manager for Parks and Recreation. And ironically enough, I am talking about PKIDs tonight. I am asking for your consideration and approval for the cost adjustment to our Parkway Improvement District Landscape Maintenance Contract with Sonrisa Landscape Management. They've been our contractor for five years now, and they are going into their final year of this contract. The cost adjustment is simply a consumer price index change only, at a rate of 5.81% for the increase. There is no change in level of service. And just as a refresher for everyone, a Parkway Improvement District, that's a special taxing district here in the town. Those 11 neighborhoods were established in the late 1980s, and as we heard earlier, the last one was 1991. And the town is in charge of maintaining those common areas in each of those neighborhoods. So that includes the irrigation systems, landscaping, improving the retention basins, and even the park areas. For example, Circle G3, one of the neighborhoods, that is a PKID, they're going through the process of getting a new play structure, Vice Mayor Anderson. We can show you pictures of it later if you'd like. But that is in progress. So our team manages those. But we do have this landscape maintenance contract to assist with all the acreage that comes along with those neighborhoods. And again, there is no change in level of service, it's simply the consumer price index change in cost. Can I answer any questions for you?
Councilmember Bonjivani?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is this a new contract?
Uh, no, sir. This is an existing contract that goes through a renewal every year at the end of the year. And it's, last year will be, this upcoming calendar year, it will end on December 31st, 2025. So around the summertime, you can expect that we'll be going through an RFP process for a new contractor.
Sorry, if you said that, I missed it, I'm sorry.
No, no, you're fine, you're good, thank you.
I'm high on sugar cookies right now.
Share one.
And Mountain Dew. Councilmember Kaprowski?
Is this increase only for this fifth and final year of the contract, or is it for a different length of time?
Uh, that's a great question. That is just for this fifth and final year. Yes, ma'am.
That's dumb consumer, what did you say? Consumer index? It's getting late, Katie.
Consumer price index.
Thank you.
It's essentially an adjustment for inflation. We've had an adjustment on this contract every year since it's been established. Some years, it's not as heavy of an increase, and some years it is. I think in 2022, that increase went up 8%, whereas the year before, it was about 1%. And so it just follows that rate of inflation.
Inflation. Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Is there more items?
Yes, I think Jessica's coming up.
Oh, Jessica's back.
Good evening. Actually, I don't think I'm next, but I just wanted to click the slide. Who's, Heritage District South anchor?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Was there a question regarding this particular item?
That might be the easier way to do this, Dan. Any questions on this item?
Uh, just wanted to see how this worked out as far as being under the, you know, the Heritage District guidelines for what we're approving, if there's any exceptions to that, and to discuss the public parking.
Absolutely, Mayor, members of the council. So as the general plan sets forth, zoning and use and land use and all those other things, we have a, another guiding document in the Heritage District known as the redevelopment plan that was adopted by council in 2018, which certainly envisions mixed use. So the property that we're talking about this evening is located on the northwest corner of Gilbert and Elliott. And the development and disposition agreement was, was approved by council. We've had a First Amendment, and what you have before you this evening is a Second Amendment. The purchase contract and all the other supporting documents coincide with that. And as, as the slide shows, we're essentially extending the agreement to December 25. And the parking specifically, that, that was ultimately agreed to, brings 45 public parking stalls into the overall inventory of the Heritage District. And so I don't know if there's any additional questions about parking or this amendment.
No, the, the additional question about that is, is, I just wanted to verify, this is something they are paying for with their development. This isn't, they're bringing 45 more spots than required, and those are public parking spots. And there is no zoning change, nothing strange. And in fact, I believe they've cut down the number of apartments that they were looking at in the mixed use. Is that correct?
Mayor, members of the council, we did ultimately agree with this, with this agreement to lower the amount of residential units coming into the district. I can't recall what the original agreement stipulated, but, but ultimately, we're below 300 units. This is a mixed-use development. There is a parking structure that the developer is paying for completely. It will be wrapped with residential units, and they will be contributing at their own cost, 45 additional stalls to the Heritage District, adding to our overall parking inventory.
Thank you for the clarity.
The importance of the public parking stalls is because they are providing commercial uses on the first floor of that building, so we need public parking stalls, not just for the residential in that area.
Mayor, members of council, you're 100% correct. Because of the mixed-use element with ground floor commercial, the ability to access that commercial conveniently, somewhat quickly, is one of the benefits of the mixed-use development that, that comes into the Heritage District. And certainly, convenient parking is, is associated with, with the overall parking, shared parking model that we have in the district.
Thank you, Dan.
You bet.
Jessica, are you just clicking? Or is Dan, Dan, oh, you're up next?
Aye. Yes, I am next. So the, the next item that was requested presentation is item number 27, related to the Ash Street realignment in the Heritage District. This particular item is related to the approval of the PMCM contract for the project. The project is currently reaching 30% design, so this is the time where we would bring a PMCM onboard. There is also an item on the agenda, I believe it's item number 29, that's related to pre-construction services for the contractor that was selected for this project as well. This project is funded by transportation bonds, and will connect Ash Street from Gilbert Road along paralleling the railroad tracks, and then realign it so that the north-south actually aligns with, with Ash Street on the north side of Vaughn, and where it kinda runs next to the parking garage. It will also connect into Vaughn Avenue, where the Vaughn Ventilator is currently being constructed in order to improve circulation into and out of the Heritage District for vehicles, as well as provide pedestrian bike-friendly access into the district as well. Questions on that?
I got a thumbs up, so, thank you.
Um, next item, we're gonna skip around a little bit, just so I'm up here all at once. Item number 30 is related to our system, our wastewater system-wide forced main retrofit project. And this is three different asks. One is for guaranteed maximum price, or GMP3, for replacing about a mile and a half of ductile iron forced main that actually sends our sludge from the Neely Water Reclamation Facility to Mesa. There's also a job order for replacing 400 linear feet of ductile iron forced main at Greenfield and Frye. And then the, the, the PMCM contract is for oversight of both of those projects. These were the next highest priority forced main retrofit projects in our forced main condition assessment, so that we can get ahead of these sewer forced main failures that are occurring, which will obviously help us mitigate potential outages and environmental damage, and emergency repairs that can cost 10 times more. So these are actually going to be dug and replaced, as opposed to sliplined. We kind of evaluate those on a case-by-case basis, just to determine, to determine the best method for rehab or replacement. Questions?
And this is unfortunately, the water enterprise fund is funding this, correct?
Wastewater.
Right, wastewater, yes, sorry. And that's...
Yes, so this is part of the large forced main replacement program that we have, that is, is a key driver in the current wastewater rate discussion that we're having as well. This is already budgeted and part of our existing plan.
But it's showing how detrimental it is that we can't even fix this, it has to be replaced.
Yes, absolutely.
And it's 20 years old?
I would have to look, I don't know the exact age, but most of the ductile iron forced mains in the town are less than 20 years old, yes.
And they were expected to last 50?
Correct.
But they didn't.
Yeah, the Neely forced main may be a little bit older than that, but...
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kaprowski has a question.
Jessica, you mentioned that these are gonna be dug and replaced versus slipline. Could you talk a little bit about the impacts that might be from construction, or like what goes into that decision?
Yeah, basically, what goes into that decision is looking at, one, the condition of the existing pipe, and whether it can be sliplined. If there is space to put a new pipe in, sometimes the bypass pumping that needs to happen in order to allow the sliplining can cost more than the sliplining itself versus digging and replacing. I'd have to look at, we can definitely update council on the traffic impacts, because obviously, the, the Neely forced main, that's a pretty long stretch, so there will be some impacts. I'd have to look at the design records to see exactly where the new alignment's gonna go, and what the traffic impacts will be, but we can definitely update council on that.
Thank you. Thanks, Jessica.
I have one more.
Okay. Sorry, I wasn't trying to get rid of you.
Uh, the last one is item number 32. This is for Seal Coat Services. This is a task order under a blanket job order contract with Sunland Asphalt. It's an annual contract, an annual preventative pavement maintenance that we do on our streets. This particular contract will allow for what we call PMMS treatment of approximately 15 miles of our local and collector streets in Gilbert. It's polymer modified master seal, it's just a type of, of pavement maintenance. It's one of many different types of pavement maintenance surface treatments that we do on our roads in order to extend their useful life. This is one of the ones that we do contract out, because it's more cost-effective for somebody else to do it than for us to have the equipment and the staff to do it ourselves. And as I mentioned, it's an annual, it's an annual contract that, that gets renewed. And we have a list of all the locations that will be completed this year, based on their lifecycle and what treatment they need.
Any questions or comments? Councilwoman Torgasen?
I just wanna say, I appreciate you taking the time, because people need to see where money's being spent, so they understand they're extending the life of their street. It didn't come at no cost. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I see Kelly approaching. Kelly's next.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I've got item number 35, Public Safety Personnel Retirement System Contribution. This is one that we talked about at the financial retreat, and then as part of the budget process, sending an additional contribution into PSPRS for our police and fire liability that we have on their pension benefit. This $10 million is, comes from the under-over, so revenues that came in over what we expected, and expenditures that came in under what we expected from last fiscal year, that we would send half of that contribution over to PSPRS to help with that funding status. We are currently at 88% funded, according to the report that just came out, and this, I'm hoping, will help us get up to the 90% for next year's report. Any questions on that?
I just wanted to say, I thought it was great, even the water tower came in under, under budget, which was amazing to me. And to see that we're getting this, this town might be the best-funded town, as far as pensions, because I see other towns nowhere near it. And, I just, thank you.
We set a very lofty goal as council to pay off that PSPRS as soon as we could, very lofty goal. And I know it made Kelly probably have heart palpitations when we did it, but you've done a great job.
No, what was worse is when we slipped back under 90. I was like, no, we worked so... I was like, no, we worked so hard, so.
We worked so hard.
Hoping next year.
We were like 91 on one and 90 on the other one, right? And then we slipped, so.
Yep.
That is a lofty goal. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I am going to speak on item number 25 and item number 36. Item number 25 is mental health services for the Gilbert Police Department. We have budgeted money in our budget this year to provide professional services. Right now, we have a very robust peer support team, and that peer support team sees quite a few of our officers on a daily and weekly basis. This would just add one more benefit of a actual licensed clinician to be on-site for a certain number of hours at the police department. As you can see here, 80% of first responders experience traumatic events on the job, and 30% of first responders develop behavioral health conditions, including depression and PTSD. The ask is to contract with a company called Blue Paz, which is currently being contracted by the fire department as well. Are there any questions on item 25?
I just wanted to say thank you for taking care of our people.
Thank you, sir. And I believe this is the last one for the night. Item number 36 is to accept an anti-human trafficking grant from the Arizona Department of Public Safety for roughly $434,000. As we are not immune to crimes, like many other municipalities, we have seen an increase in online sex cases involving minors, prostitution cases, and a number of other internet crimes against children. Accepting this grant will allow us to use these funds to recoup some of our expenses, specifically with a part-time detective we have in a anti-human trafficking task force, along with quite a few pieces of software and hardware. As the criminals get a little more intelligent, it's a little harder to catch them, and there's constantly new companies and software coming out that help us to combat some of those crimes online and stay one step ahead of everybody. So the ask tonight would be to accept the grant and take these funds.
And as my question with every grant, are there any clawbacks on that that we need to be aware of?
No, sir. There's quarterly reporting mechanisms with the Arizona Department of Public Safety, but no. Thank you.
That's it. So with that, I'll make a motion that we approve our consent calendar, which is items 23 through 38.
Just a second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote. Motion passes.
That concludes the consent agenda. Moving to administrative items, we have two policy items on administrative items, policy number 2025 dash 01, and boards and commissions consider acceptance of the Community Engagement Task Force final report. Let's tackle item number 39 first, policy number 2025 dash 01. Does anyone need a presentation on this item?
Yeah, I just wanted to hear how it morphed into what I'm seeing today.
Okay. Who would like to tackle policy number 2025 dash 01?
Mayor, this is actually a financial policy we are required by statute to approve year after year, so it's on every December agenda.
Thank you, Chevelli.
Does this have anything to do with, we had had a study session, I'm going to say about a year ago, about disclosing doing business with the town if you were on council or mayor. Is this related to that? Because I see numbers in here that I had never heard before.
That's a state law, I think, that we are referring to.
Yeah, those are two separate items.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Would someone like to consider making a motion to approve policy number 2025 dash 01?
I'll make a motion to approve items 39 and 40, is that correct?
Do we want to make an, just 39, or do we want to do a discussion on 40?
Oh, just 39.
I'll second that.
We have a motion on item number 39. Please vote, I already have, sorry, I have a motion by Councilmember Bon Giovanni, seconded by Councilmember Tilke. Please vote. Almost forgot. Motion passes 6-0. Now moving on to item 40, Boards and Commissions Consider Acceptance of the Community Engagement Task Force Final Report. Councilmember Tilke, do you want to say something?
Thank you. Is Melanie here to do the report? So you may remember that this is the original Community Engagement Task Force final report. I don't know if you want an abbreviated version, since you received it in your packet, but I'd like, just so that the public has an opportunity to hear the fine work that was taken place.
Yes, we had a study session earlier, and my brain was not functioning just now. We had a study session earlier on the last five or six months of the Community Engagement Task Force focused on teen violence, and this topic is the original Community Engagement Task Force and their final report. So everybody knows what we're discussing. Thanks, Melanie.
Mayor and councilmembers, Melanie Dijkstra, volunteering community resources manager, one of the staff liaisons to the Community Engagement Task Force, and as Councilmember Tilke referenced, this actually, you received the final report of the first five topics that the group took on, and I'm just going to go over just very high-level some of the information for you. As you may recall, that council members did weigh in on what areas of social well-being that were having significant impacts in Gilbert. And from that feedback, five focus topics were identified, and those were mental health and suicide prevention, human and sex trafficking, domestic violence, homelessness and low-income challenges, and a kind, welcoming, and inclusive Gilbert. And in order to tackle all of these topics, we did engage a lot of our citizenry. We actually opened applications for the task force, and there were 87 applicants that came forward interested in serving. You appointed nine members with two alternates at the January 25, 2022 meeting. We kicked off that group as a first meeting in March 7 of 2022. As you can see here on the slide, those were our appointed members that served as part of this group. And as part of that process, we actually had 23 meetings. We held these over the course of about two-plus years. They did about 60 hours in meeting time. They also received 31 different presentations. This was ensured that they had all the information that was relevant to each of the topic areas. We had some overviews of some information, allowed them to create some priorities as to what, how they would like to tackle the subject areas, and then, then further presentations were done at each of the meetings in order to make sure they could dive a little bit deeper into all the subject areas. We also asked them to read and review over 15 books, assessments, and reports on the topic areas. This again gave them a comprehensive look at all of the subject areas that they were doing. And as you heard in the study session, we actually used compression planning in this first go-around as well. That's why we kind of utilized the same systems as we did for the last group. But that, again, was an opportunity really during those planning processes, that the groups got to have breakout discussions, really put forth the individual ideas, dot prioritize that we did, and again, putting on that impact effort matrix so that they could all be identified and defined as to what was really wanting to move forward. And that's what became those final recommendations. And after each of those subject areas, we did come and present to council those study sessions to make sure that you had an awareness, as we were moving along, what recommendations were moving forward. And in the report that you did receive, you will see there are 111 identified recommendations over the five topic areas, but we wanted to create the report in a manner that showcased each of the areas similarly. So you'll see the topic area, but we also presented what do we know? And this was based on the information that we received during our presentations and our educational sessions, what statistics were out there. As Chief Basagli was just talking about, the human and sex trafficking, a lot of that data really was informative to understand what those systems were, and what he was just referencing in terms of supportive of a grant, really, we heard about the peer-to-peer investigation, and that's one of those systems that they were using to tackle that issue. So we wanted to make sure that was in the report. We also wanted to highlight what's already being done. So we didn't wait till, you know, we're not waiting till next year or the year after to kick some of those things off. When those ideas came to us, and they were great recommendations, and they were, we were trying to move forward if we could. And so some of those things are already in place, we wanted to make sure that was highlighted. But overall, then, you will see a table that highlights for every single of these focus areas, that there's an action item, what that timeframe expected was, is going, is it something we can tackle pretty quickly? Is it something that's midterm or long-term? And then we also wanted to put in place, and we had lots of discussions with our group, is who could really help us work these? As you heard from our last task force presentation, these are not things that we can do all alone and independent of our community. There's a lot of partners we'll have to work with, whether it's the nonprofits, our faith-based organizations, our schools, and just the community as a whole. And so we tried to really look as to see who those partners could be. Overall, there were, like I said, 111 total recommendations that came forward from this group for all five topic areas. Mental health had about 14, human and sex trafficking had 10, domestic violence 10, homelessness 11, and kind, welcome, and inclusive 8. And if you add all that together, that's not 111, because a lot of those have subcategories. So those are kind of the overarching themes that we had in each of those areas, but they did a great job working forward. And I would also like to give a really huge shout-out to Judy, who took my Word document and turned it into the pretty report that you received that has colors and visuals. So really great, I'd still be working on it, to be honest, because it wouldn't have turned into that. So with that, I'll take any questions, but wanted to just give you the overview and highlights of all the work that was done by that group over the last couple of years.
Thank you, Melanie. Any comments or questions at this time? Councilmember Tilke?
Thank you, Mayor. Is it my understanding that this will be published so the public can review it as well? And the media can have a copy of it?
I'm going to phone a friend on this one.
It's in our packet.
Yes, I believe, normally when we are done, and if you accept this report, we will make it a published document out on the website. It'll generally live within the community resources area.
Okay, thanks. I just want to take just a moment to thank the entire task force, who gave two years of their life. That's what they gave, really. We met every month and a lot of homework in between, and to investigate and identify gaps throughout the pillars that we've discussed. Again, Melanie has been a champion and worked tirelessly to organize and staff this task force. I want to also recognize Dawn and Judy for being there from day one and helping us get through this. This was a big, heavy lift. These were big, heavy topics, and I believe the entire task force stepped up. Can't thank Kathleen Dowler again for her unique facilitation to take all those ideas and get it to the point we could give you a report. So we've accomplished so much, and I hope that you took the time to read the report, because when you see the stats of each of these pillars, and then you see the action that the town of Gilbert has already taken, it is very exciting to see, and I think it tells the story about a caring community. And there are things we continue to do, and I think, as we mentioned earlier, it doesn't stop here. And one of the reasons I wanted to take time just to recognize everybody and give Melanie an opportunity to come back up here, but I didn't, I don't want this to go on a shelf and think we're done. Well, we've done these great things, but here's some amazing things that we can do in the future. And so I hope that the council will take a good look at these items and create some priorities around it as we look into the future for some of the efforts that we're doing. And I'm hoping, I don't know if there's questions, but I hope I get to make the motion on this. So anyway, I'll put that off until that time. Thanks.
Vice Mayor, here next.
You mentioned caring. Did you know that out of the top 100 cities in the country, we're named number four most caring?
Oh, my.
Yeah.
Councilmember Torgason?
Melanie, I just wanted to say thank you, because you're one of the people that I look at and know that you have a passion for what you do and you love what you do, and you go over the top for what you do. And I see you at a lot of places, and I just, I just respect how engaged you are and how much you do care. I just wanted to say it. Sorry.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. This was a wonderful project to work on, really great to work with the folks that were engaged and look, I'm excited to see what we can do next.
Councilmember Kaproski? Melanie, thank you so much for your work on this. Also, thank you to all the volunteers that served on this task force. What amazing work. And thank you, Councilmember Tilke, for your leadership and driving to make sure that all of this got done in a timely manner and probably with very meaningful outcomes. So thank you. Councilmember Bon Giovanni?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. They've already said everything I wanted to say. But thank you again, and for the whole task force, and I really appreciate your hard work that you guys did.
When we, when I came on as mayor in 2021, we didn't have a community engagement task force. It was something that was discussed coming out of the pandemic and from the listening sessions, and Councilmember Tilke wanted to take this ball and run with it, for lack of a better analogy, and a cliche. And I wholeheartedly supported that from what we heard from the residents at that time. And I very much appreciate, everybody said, has said great things, but I very much appreciate you, Melanie, for taking this and handling it. And then, let's just throw at you, let's turn it into a different kind of community engagement task force, as you're halfway through this year, trying to finalize this task force. So again, thank you for stepping up and handling that. It is a passion for you. You live that every single day. I'm going to point out that Melanie has on her Christmas vest that she wears to every December meeting, but, because she's just that kind of person. She's always happy, she's always willing to go the extra mile, and very much appreciated in the situation. And again, thank you to all of the volunteers that stepped up for this community engagement task force when we, when we moved forward with this idea a couple of years ago, and Councilmember Tilke for taking that ball and running with it, too. But thank you. I will bring it back to the dais and look to Councilmember Tilke for a motion.
Thank you for obliging me on that. I'd like to make a motion to accept the Community Engagement Task Force final report.
And I'd love to second that.
So a motion by Councilmember Tilke, seconded by Councilmember Bon Giovanni. Motion passes 6-0. That now moves us to communications from citizens portion of our agenda. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. We value the participation of our community members and the robust exchange of ideas. However, it's essential that this discourse remains respectful and constructive, reflecting the professionalism expected in such forums. While we understand and appreciate the passion our community members bring to these sessions, we must remind everyone that clapping during the meeting is not acceptable. Also, playing of music or showing videos may subject the town to copyright infringement and is not permitted. Tonight, as you're asked to proceed to the podium, please, when you arrive at the podium, state your name and your city or town of residence, and then you'll be provided with three minutes to address the council. First up tonight is Bob Schnebel.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. My name's Bob Schnebel. I live in Adora Trails in Gilbert. Wanted to talk briefly about the cattle issue that we're having in Adora Trails, but before I get there, I wanted to thank all the council for the work that you do. Having served on numerous boards before, I know the hard work that you go through, and I especially wanted to thank the two retiring members of the board. A week and a half ago, we were fortunate in Adora Trails. We had a couple of the town council members come to visit Adora Trails because they wanted to see our cattle issue and our cattle firsthand. Unfortunately, the cattle were camera shy, because you gentlemen came in the afternoon, and the cattle generally come out at night. But also, unfortunately, you got to experience firsthand the messes that the cattle leave in Adora Trails. So we understand that Dawn had taken you on a tour around Adora Trails to see some of the damage, et cetera, and that your suggestion was to establish a task force to move forward with other HOAs and see what we can do to improve the situation in Adora Trails and the others. So I'm hoping that's the case, and we just want to thank you for everything that you're doing. Any questions?
Thank you.
No? Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Bill Spence.
I'm a resident of Gilbert. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and to properly acknowledge Councilmember Tilke and Mayor Peterson and their outstanding performance for the most thankless and most rewarding job that I have ever done. It's hard to believe that it's been four years since I've served with the two of you. Bridgette was there for my first meeting, and Kathy was there for my last. During that time... During that time, we appointed Vice Mayor Anderson to serve as mayor. Now, it seems we have come full circle, as Vice Mayor Anderson prepares to once again take the reins as mayor of our great town. I think that we can all agree that we didn't always agree on things, but any disagreements that we had stayed behind closed doors and were never displayed publicly, and we were always friends. Our council roles were business and never personal. However, that wouldn't be completely true. For Bridgette and Kathy, it was all about personal. Each having served our town for several decades, I have never known anyone that truly loves our town more than these two. I will miss the days of calling the mayor and asking her to stop by a lemonade stand that some kids set up in the neighborhood and said she would show up. That's just the kind of person that Bridgette is. These two leaders are the best ambassadors, both locally and abroad, that our town could have ever hoped for. I will miss being able to tell them I have a really crazy idea. Nothing compares to one of my craziest ideas that came to fruition because of these words from Bridgette. Bill, you have the Veterans Advisory Board. A long story short, this ultimately led to Gilbert being selected as a host town for the USS Arizona submarine. I wanted to thank both of you for your support of our veterans and for carrying the torch and giving life to our Veterans Advisory Board. I don't want to steal the mayor's thunder, but she just returned from Pearl Harbor, where she witnessed for the first time sailors from the new USS Arizona honoring those lost on the battleship Arizona, BB-39, blending the values and ideas of our past and forging our future. That sounds like what, to me, what Gilbert is all about. On behalf of myself and the residents of Gilbert, thank you both for making a difference in our lives. And in true Navy tradition, I wanted to wish you fair winds and following seas. May God bless you and all of your future endeavors. Thank you. I have a small gift for both of you that includes my last purple bendy straw umbrella. If you know, you know, but I'll give it over to Judy and take care of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Scott September?
Boy, how do you follow that? I wish I went first now. I'm here for a couple of reasons. One, I wanted to thank everybody here on the dais and staff who thought it was important enough to show up last night as we dedicated the new Gilbert Water Tower Plaza. It was an exciting evening, and it was funny, is I got there probably 10 minutes early, but I couldn't find a parking spot. And I'm not complaining, because I was actually happy. I was like, this is a big turnout, that I've got to park at the very end of Vaughn Road, where there were no lights, it was dark, and it was scary. But it was worth it because of the community turnout for that event. So, thank you, everybody, for being there, and thanks to Dawn Prince and her team that executed that project under budget, and Rob Carmona and those folks that did a great job. I'm also here tonight to thank Mayor Bridgette Peterson and Councilmember Kathy Tilke for their service to this town. Their service started decades ago. It's not just the service that they performed here on the dais for the community, their community involvement started long, long before that. And it was an honor for me to serve with them on this dais. This dais is, as you know, is a jealous mistress. So, I want to thank your families as well for sharing you with this town. And I also want to congratulate Vice Mayor Anderson on your election, your successful election, and you're soon to be seated there in that mayor's chair. I look forward to the experience and expertise that you're going to bring to the town, and I know that your involvement in this town spans even probably further than these two that are coming off the dais. And I think that's going to, that's going to, you're going to, you have a lot to bring to the town of Gilbert, and you're going to continue the vision that you started long ago. So, thank you very much. God bless you, and I wish you all the best. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Thank you, Scott. That concludes communications. Mayor?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Moving on to future meetings, only item listed is meet and confer follow-up discussion scheduled into 2025. Next is communications report from Oral Redenbacher, our town manager. I can't, I can't unsee it, I'm sorry. It's my last night to make fun of you, Patrick.
Mayor, members of the council, I'm just looking at the palette of colors up on the dais, and I'm like, see, I have to carry Christmas cheer for everybody up here, and I think this jacket is doing that job ably. I've got just a couple of things I'll share tonight. If we want to move to the first slide, just in time for the holidays, we want to welcome home Stefan Walston? One more, okay. Stefan Walston, who is our Water Energy Services Resources Planning Advisor, returned safely home after deployment to the Middle East from January to November of this year. He served in the Army for 17 years and was recently promoted on his deployment to Master Sergeant in the 856 Military Police Academy, so, or Company, my apologies. We're glad to have him back. I'm sure his family is thrilled to have him back just in time for the holidays, and he is a beloved member of our team, and we're glad he's home safe with us. Next, we all knew this was coming, but it certainly came upon us quick. Want to wish Kathy Tilke Godspeed and the best in everything with the next stage of your life. We know you're going to still stay involved, and we're really happy to hear that, but we thank you for your long service to this community, not only officially with various capacities with the town, but with your leadership of the chamber for 25 years. You served on our Economic Development Advisory Board from 1996 to 2008. You were on a Citizens Budget Advisory Committee, is my understanding, during the recession, and then, most recently, as a council member for 2020 and 2025. Kathy, we have sincerely enjoyed working with you and appreciate everything you did for this community. And then, lastly, Mayor, your long service, starting with your service on the Planning Commission in 2000, going all the way to 2014, then as a council member from 2015 to 2021, and then for the last four years as our mayor, you have, take a lot of history with you from all of your years in service in your various capacities. We greatly appreciate all of that. We know you'll be moving to a new home and a new community to be near your daughter and grandson and son-in-law. We wish you the best in all of your future endeavors, and thank you again for your years of service to this organization. With that, I'd just like to thank our employees for another great year. I hope all of them find the time to enjoy time with their families, their loved ones, their friends, rest, recuperate, and have a happy holidays, and we'll see you in 2025. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Means a lot. Next, report from the council. Well, you always have written comments.
I'll go first. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to start, yeah, I want to start with talking about Kathy. It took me half a year to stop saying Vice Mayor Tilke, and I remember the first time that we met, you said to me, Chuck, because of your business background, do you have the patience to not get things done immediately? And I had to think about that for quite a while, but I learned that sometimes slowing down is actually a benefit, and you taught me that there's always a long-term consequence for every decision that's made up here. And I want to thank you for that, and we'll be forever grateful for that. I'm going to miss looking down the dais and seeing, seeing your either face of approval or face of what the heck is Chuck saying now? I'm definitely going to miss that. But it's been, it's been a pleasure serving with you, and I wish you all luck in the future. Madam Mayor, I'm probably going to say Madam Mayor to Scott for half a year, because I've been so used to saying that. Our first year was rocky, very rocky. We acted like brothers and sisters up here, but I think after some time, we both grew a little bit, and I have to honestly say that this last year has been an honor and a pleasure to serve you, and wish you nothing but good things in the future. Now, I'll do my, my, I almost forgot about that. Let me see. So, here we go. Fremont Recreational Center, New Year's Eve, noon, Year's Eve party. Oh, I got that, that was cool. Okay, right now, ringing the new year with a bang at the Freestone Recreation Center at 10:00 AM on December 28th, December 28th. Gather your family for a free unforgettable celebration filled with fun and festivities. Dive into various exciting games, compete for fantastic prizes, and unleash your creativity with a special craft activity. Don't miss the exhilarating balloon drop that promises to dazzle everyone as the clock strikes noon. Thank you.
Councilmember Torgerson?
I just wanted to say also, Kathy, it's been a pleasure. But Bridgette, I want to say this because we had the most horrible start, and through the last two years, I've learned a lot about you, you've opened up a lot of things. You seniorly taught me something about my own privilege that I grew up with, and I want to say I do have a profound respect for you and how you've come through your life raising an extremely successful daughter, that you found the right man for you, that is, that is an absolute defender of you, and I have a lot of respect for people that do that, for people in their lives. And I wanted to let you know, as you leave this dais, that I do respect you.
Any report from council? No final report, Councilman Tilke? Nope?
Okay, then it's down to me. I have quite a few things to report. I think we have a slide, my traditional schedule, and it's a little light, because for the last two weeks, out of the last two weeks, I was in Hawaii for one of the weeks. So, we have some meetings on there, and then I went off to Pearl Harbor, which I'll have Eric add up another slide, Eric or Judy, whoever's doing, I think it's Eric. That is Nikki Stratton. She is the sponsor for the USS Arizona, and she was the keynote speaker at the Pearl Harbor Remembrance Ceremony in Oahu. You can see the Arizona Memorial over Nikki's left shoulder there. It's amazing to be part of this organization, and thank you to Bill Spence for bringing this idea to Gilbert. It really has changed and enriched my life in so many different ways that I can't even begin to wrap my head around. Next, we have the official crest for the USS Arizona SSN 803. The commander and a few members of the crew were present in Pearl Harbor, and they released this crest, unveiled this crest officially while we were all there together. You'll notice it's in the shape of the state of Arizona, and it has a copper edge, since we are the copper state. If you look very closely at it, you see the submarine, but below the submarine, you see the battleship. And Nikki's comments are always forging the future of the namesake of the Arizona while reflecting on the past, and I think that this crest does such a great job doing that. But I also wanted to mention that this crest came about through an art contest that was of high school students here in the state of Arizona, and then some crafting from the crew following the contest. And the art contest was actually won by Elise Hansen, who's a ninth grader at Highland High School, and then the second-place winner was Kaylee Gerhauser, who's a 10th grader at Highland High School. And so, it's really great to see, and they got a lot of entries, let me tell you, they got a lot of entries, but they put this crest together from a couple of those entries that were made, and they were thrilled to be able to start to show this off. The crew is coming together very nicely for the submarine, and now that we don't think we'll be probably launched for the next four years, I would say. Later in the day on Pearl Harbor Day, if you want to go to the next slide, I went and visited, because we actually had two bands from Gilbert, Arizona, in Oahu for the Pearl Harbor Day Parade. A Gilbert resident, Joel Biggs, is the parade organizer every single year, and during our Veterans Day event here at Gilbert Town Hall, a mom, she's actually up there in the photo on the left, she is a Gilbert team family member, is the best way to say, because she's married to one of our firefighters, and she's the mom of one of our firefighters. She also has a kid in the band, and she came up to me and said, we're going to be in Oahu for Pearl Harbor Day, and the red t-shirt that I have on there in the middle, she delivered two of those to my front door for my husband and I to be able to wear when we found, when we went down to see the band that afternoon. So, we went down and spent a few minutes with them, and I took a lot of pictures with the kids. And then, we had a second band there from, that's Williamsfield High School, and the second band is from Higley High School, which I didn't find out till later that they were going to be there, so I went over to visit with them, and one of their moms that was on the trip with them gave me her Hawaiian shirt to put on so that I could have a picture taken with the band, and you see that I had to unbutton it all the way up, because I tried to try and cover that red t-shirt that I had from Williamsfield High School. So, Higley High Band was there, and Williamsfield High School Band was there, and it was just amazing to be able to see them participating in that event out there in Oahu. I think that's on my slide, Eric, right? And then, I wanted to just make an announcement coming out of Phoenix Mesa Gateway this morning. As of July 1st this year, the city of Phoenix had officially removed themselves from the Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport Authority Board, leaving the cities of Mesa, the town of Queen Creek, the town of Gilbert, Apache Junction, and Gila River Indian Community as the five remaining members of the authority board. And this morning, at my last Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport Authority Board meeting, there was a resolution passed to authorize the change in the name of the airport authority. It is now Mesa Gateway Airport Authority Board, officially dropping the name Phoenix. It passed with a motion, it passed with a 4-1 vote, and I was the dissenting vote on that one. It's difficult to run an airport when you don't have a major city attached to it, so we'll see how that goes, and I wish everybody the best. It was my last day there, and they presented me with a beautiful photo of the airport. This evening, December 17th, this evening, I had to miss, but I was invited to, the University of Arizona College of Nursing was holding a graduation for nurses over at our university building in downtown Gilbert. They were graduating 63 nurses in tonight's class, and in that 63 nurses, one of them is the 500th nurse graduated from that U of A College of Nursing campus here in downtown Gilbert. And from when we had the idea to put a university building in downtown Gilbert, and then bringing in the University of Arizona, that partnership has paid off in multitudes, because the nursing shortage is so great, and there's such a lack of great nursing colleges for those students to be able to go to, that this partnership now has created 500 new nurses out in, out in the world. The other part of the news for the university building that Patrick gave me was, next summer, we will be paying that university building off early and saving over $15 million in interest for the town of Gilbert, and the building will be completely paid off and leased out and can make plans for the future. I hope that the town continues to keep that and sees it, that the asset that I believe that it is, and continues to help groom these nurses out into society, because nursing isn't just a shortage here in Arizona, it's a shortage across the country. I think that's all that I have. It has been, oh, I did want to mention Water Tower Plaza. It came up a couple of times this evening, and with the opening of Gilbert Water Tower Plaza last night, the ribbon cutting, and the kickoff for the holiday season with the lighting of the water tower, we've missed our water tower being lit in downtown Gilbert, and to bring it back and to see the new park opened up was just amazing, and thank you to the staff who pulled that off in time to get it done for Christmas, because that we were, we were, had our fingers crossed that it was going to happen, and thank you for that. It was a beautiful event, there were so many residents there, and it was so nice to see them. But congratulations on opening that great park and creating a space that I think everybody in Gilbert will love to be able to go out and participate in. That's all I have. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm voting instead of saying it. The last thing I do at the dais, I can't figure it out. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. I have a motion by Councilmember Tilke, seconded by the Councilmember Kaprowski. All in favor, just say aye. Aye. Meeting adjourned.